City Council Meeting of June twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, back to order. First item is a pledge of allegiance. It will be led by Jacob Lyman from Troop Eight-Four-Eight. Jacob? Right there, yep.
Okay. Please rise. Please repeat the pledge of allegiance after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with due reason and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Jacob. Item four A, communications. Bryce?
Thank you. Just want to let you know that there's been some more good news about West Jordan. West Jordan was voted number eight on the top-ten list of suburban cities near Salt Lake for young professionals, so congratulations for that. Also, number two, Big Buddha, will be filming the morning news on the arena on July third, beginning at five forty-five a.m. Mayor, are you going to be joining for that? I don't know if Julie's talked to you? Okay, fantastic. So we appreciate anyone who's participating in that newscast that morning. Number three, contestant list. We just want everybody to know that for the Stampede, we have had an overwhelming array of cowboys that have signed up. According to what Julie gave me, we have seven world champions, a million-dollar winner at the American Rodeo, and we have the highest number of entrants of any year. And I believe the major contributor to that was that the council was willing to raise the purse for this year's Stampede. And so it's definitely had a great turnout, which means we will have an even better show this year for the Stampede on the second, third, and fourth. So again, council, we invite you to come. Julie's probably already passed out your packets, and Kim, I know they're working on that. And if there's anything that you need, please let us know. We expect to have a great weekend next weekend, so thank you.
Darian?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Yedroke?
Yes. Just to let everyone know, the economy's starting to heat up here, which is a good thing. Housing starts are back to the levels that existed in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. As you know, housing and rooftops actually drives the economy, the retail economy, which is promising. That's good, but it will, on the other side, put some demands on staff, and we may be coming back to you for, to address that issue. That's my report.
Thanks. Brian?
Thanks, Mayor and council. Just a quick note, as you guys know, the summer heat's on us now. As you drive through the city, you'll notice some of the parks and park strips are a little brown. That's due to us cutting our water back drastically from what we had last year. We're only watering, on average, three days a week at most parks, just to help do our parks the conservation effort. So we do have a few irrigation problems that we're working on right now, some major ones. But that's where we're at right now, so if you have questions, let me know. Thank you.
Thanks. Ryan?
Yes, I received last week a letter from the Governor Financial Officers Association. I just wanted to read the first paragraph of this. "We're pleased to notify you and your, that your comprehensive annual financial reporter, Caffer, for the fiscal year end, June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen qualifies for a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. This certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. It's obtained, its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management." So we would just like to let you know that, again, our city's received this award. It is actually the thirty-third time in the history of this city we've received this award. So we were very proud of that. We've gotten it, I believe, for the last twenty-plus years consecutively, so we hope to definitely continue receiving that award as we go on in the future. Thank you.
Thanks. Bueno?
Thank you, Mayor. Two things. First of all, we wanted to let you know, if you haven't been down Ninety South, that the roadway is open. It's actually open three to four weeks ahead of schedule. I wanted to thank the council for allowing us to close the road, because that allowed us to do the work a lot quicker. And also to the staff, to Dave Murphy, Greg Davenport, and the other staff. We were able to accomplish in a year what typically takes three years to accomplish when it's a UDOT project, so we wanted to thank everybody for that. The second is Fifty-Six Hundred West. We're, that's the between Seventy South and Sixty-Two Hundred South. We're anticipating that that will be done in the middle of July. That's actually about three, three weeks ahead of schedule, so we just want to let you know that.
Chief McRee?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to let you know, you might have saw in the news Monday night, KSL done a story on one of our crews out of Station Fifty-three. I just want to briefly recognize Captain Mike Bain and Zach Sumner and Colin Steele, who were on that call. We transported a male that was having some difficulties. He'd been working on his car, and after they got him going to the hospital, it was determined that the wife's vehicle was inoperable, and they stuck around and fixed the vehicle and got it to where she could drive to the hospital. KSL done a very nice story on it on Monday. Actually, today at our office, we received calls from New York, Department that actually saw that and wanted to say thanks. So I just want to say thanks to Captain Bain and his crew for going above and beyond what they needed to do. That's all I have, thanks.
Chief Diamond?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Councilmember Rice?
Thank you, Mayor. I went to the Jordan River Commission this past week and was informed that we have a puncture vine weevil release party coming up along the Jordan River Trail. These weevils that we'll be releasing actually eat plants. They, they actually, they put their eggs in the seeds of the puncture vine, goat heads, colloquially. So that's going to be on July eighteenth, from eight to nine in the morning, and meeting at the Mill Race Park in Taylorsville. If you want to participate in that, they basically give you a cup with the weevils in it, and you go put it out there by the trail and in places where they're having issues with the goat heads. It'll help with being able to ride your bike easily, so. Anybody who wants to volunteer to participate in that, there's more information on myjordanriver.org.
Councilmember South?
Thank you, goat weevils. Those goat heads are a menace. Just a quick item concerning the council. We have an individual that serves the council in our administrative staff that's supposed to be, help us with research and what have you. And understanding that our city manager is trying to do the job of multiple people, it's very, he was mentioning this, and I suggested that we take that individual and have that person report directly to him, be his personal assistant. The reason I bring that up is because that individual's supposed to serve the council as a whole. I don't think that that's necessary. We thought that might be helpful. I don't think we've gotten the news out of that as we participated. So I would suggest that the council, I'm just giving my consent, it's the city manager's, you know, we interfere with anything else that he was, you know, that he's really doing. But this is an individual that happens to report duly to him and to us, and so I would give my consent to reorganize and reclassify that, that position, and just throw that to the council if anybody else is in disagreement, to bring that relief to our city manager to help get, move, move the process along, move the flow of information, and help get the business done in the city. We really, really, really have, that help is, is very needed at this time. So I'll throw that out, if there's anybody in disagreement, you know, speak up, but that's, I think that's something that we need to do to help the city.
Just a question, so you're saying reclassify that job?
Probably reorganize and, and remove that from having any direct report to the city council itself, just like any other employee. That position would report and work strictly for the city manager and the council, and request any assistance as they would through any other employee throughout the city.
That would be a reclassification?
If that's what it takes, reclassification, if we need a budget amendment, whatever we need to do, do it, fix the problem, and, and help the work of the city move along.
Let's bring that back and put it on the agenda for the future.
Well, I don't know that needs to be on the agenda either, maybe it does.
Well, reclassification certainly does.
Well, then don't reclassify for now, if that's the case, if we can immediately have that, if we can give him, if it's possible, give him the direction to make that move immediately tomorrow, if it needs to be, or the next day, or whenever possible, whenever you think. I'm just throwing that back to the city manager, say, "That's in your court, but I wouldn't, I would consent to that," I guess is what, whatever change you want to make. And I'm just asking the rest of the council if they would consent to him doing that as well.
I wouldn't, I think it would take a budget amendment and a reclassification of job hiring and job scope.
So there's no, no, it sounds like there's no, nobody disagrees with that, so.
I disagree with that.
One disagrees. Okay, thank you. Other than that, I was going to comment on the, on the rodeo, which we have a spectacular show coming. Bryce, you handled that very well. It's, the quality, it's fun to come to a rodeo, and sometimes you like to see the animals win, sometimes you like to see, you know, the cowboys win. It's good to see a, a good mix, and we've got some quality cowboys coming, and it'll be an awesome show, motorcycles coming back. I love our fireworks show, it is, it is spectacular, I put it up against, you know, most, I don't know, there's, it's, it's great, it just goes and goes and goes, so. Thanks to everybody involved, we have some community members here tonight, so thank you, and that's all I have.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't going to say anything, but I'm going to take it home with a personal privilege, because it's a unique day in history for me. Today's my twentieth wedding anniversary, and my wife is not here, so I want to wish her the best, and let her know I love her. Thank you for letting me do that here in a public setting.
Councilmember Hagan?
Thanks, Mayor. After, I hope everybody takes this right, but my daughter was a victim of crime, you know, we had a guard cell at our house, and somebody stole her iPhone six. But our officers came to the rescue, and I want to call out, because they never get recognized, Officer Eric Taylor and Walter Dodds recovered that phone with, you know, tracker phone through your system. So thanks to our officers, you know, that are down there on the front line, so my daughter was a happy person, so. The other thing, Mayor, I want to discuss is, you know, I was privileged to, and I think all the councilwork, by, by where our city manager, interim city manager, had a meeting today with senior staff, talking about our form of government. And it was informative, did a good job, went through all the different points in our city code. And the part that I liked the most was the fact that he put the council body at the top. But, you know, and I appreciate that. But, you know, how I look at it, I look at the resident should be at the top. You know, you're the shareholders of our city, and I hope maybe we have a great staff, and they provide all these services, and sometimes we forget, you know, we're all the, where we're elected and where really the power of the city comes from, and that's from the residents, so I appreciate it. Thanks, Bryce, for that meeting. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Hanson?
Nothing tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item, a reminder that the Performing Arts Group is in the middle of their run for Joseph and Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat. So anyone who wants to catch that, that will be wrapping up Thursday, Friday, Saturday over at Copper Hills High School, starting at seven o'clock, or excuse me, seven-thirty, seven-thirty. That's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
I have nothing tonight. We'll look to item five, citizens' comments. I've had several sign up to speak. Just a reminder, we have four public hearings, actually, five public hearing, five public hearings tonight. So if you're here to speak on one of the public hearing items, the time would be later in the meeting, unless, of course, you want to speak now. If you have desire to speak on other issues, now would be the time, you'll be allowed three minutes to speak. Barbara Bachmann and Pam Marcusson.
Hi, I'm Barbara Bachmann, and this is Pam Marcusson. You know, this is the Moms. We just wanted to take a minute and tell you how much we appreciate everything you've done. Good job, you've taken good care of the kids, thanks to Bryce, thanks to Wendell Rigby, and we want to spend the rest of our time just shaking your hands, if that's okay?
John Allred?
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to speak to you again. I was here two weeks ago about a problem we have with the irrigation pipeline on Fortieth West, and I'm here representing forty-eight members of our subdivision that's water users. Since then, I have got some information back from the city, from Justin, that the pipe between, the pipe from, in front of Country Square and Villa West does not belong to the city. The city says it, it isn't theirs, but the pipe from in front of Huntington Estates is the city's. So the question is, who owns that pipe in front of Country Square and Villa West? What are we going to do to get the problem fixed? For forty years, we never had a problem with the water coming down across the road and down to our subdivision. First off, it was open ditch, then it was piped, never had a problem. The pipe was sufficient size to carry the volume, which fluctuates. When we set our gate up at Canal to get our share of water, the water will fluctuate by volume, by the rising and falling of the water in the canal. And also runoff from a hay field that's being irrigated, that runoff runs into our ditch. And with that pipe being compromised the way it was, with three loops, two siphons, there's no way that pipe will carry the volume of water. So now, on the twenty-ninth of February, the water was coming up out of the manhole right there in front of Country Square. Could have been a flood, but we sandbagged it, got the water to go to the Catch Basin. So we cut our water flow down by half. We're getting half of our water out of the canal. And the problem's going to be is, if that canal fluctuates, we get the runoff, it's going to get flooded, somebody's going to get flooded. And now, the pipe has been found to be crushed just north of that manhole, down to about ninety percent of the pipe. And when that pipe crushed down, what does that do to under the road? There's a void there, it's got to be. One of these days, a heavy truck's going to come by there, and down it goes, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Question?
Councilmember South?
So Wendell, Rigby, you've been working, you've been working with him, trying to identify, is the, the answer that it's not the city's pipes, there's nothing we can do about, or are we still investigating what?
That, that portion of the pipe does not belong to the city. Justin's been working with this gentleman to, to discuss that. I think what was, what was indicated was that if he felt that there was an issue that the city needed to take care of, that, that he could file a plan with the city.
It seems that we have a construction project, that road was rebuilt, and then following that.
Right.
So something happened within that construction process?
Up to that problem, point, we never had a problem, but from the time the construct, construction started, and they made the changes in the pipe, we've had to lower our volume of water. Now, on the twenty-ninth of May, that pipe all of a sudden gives way, was crushed down, and we had a heck of a stream coming out in the gutter.
So does the city not have some sort of liability? It doesn't seem right to say that, well, we, we built a road, and we hired a contractor to do that, the pipe subsequently is now crushed, and you're on your own. I don't know that that's right. What, what record, what do we do? We can't just, can we just end at this point? What else can we do?
We can go back and look at it again, if you'd like, it's, like us to.
I think that's the right thing to do, you know.
According to Justin, he told me that there's no documentation about those, that pipe, who installed it. So it was either the city or the developer that developed Country Square and Villa West. But why wasn't the pipe put in the ditch where it originally should have been, like it is in front of Huntington Estates?
And I don't know if, Mayor Wolf, I don't know if you've reached out to them as well? Your company built, or you built the road, and you, you mentioned that you had some really intimate knowledge, I don't know who your project manager was there, maybe they could help in that regard as well? And, and try to, that just doesn't seem right, that this would work. We have a construction project, and it doesn't, and then we say it's not ours. Something doesn't seem to work, so.
Well, no irrigation pipes are ours, they're by the irrigation company, and that pipe has been in a long time, it's corrugated metal pipe, which is completely rotted. There was a slip line project that was supposed to happen, to slip identity polyethylene through the pipe, the existing pipe. I don't know why that ever happened, but it didn't, and now you have a subsidence, and this is the first of many. I think, because I know that pipe intimately, and it, it leaks like, worse than, this will be the first of many, and I, it's not, we don't have no ownership of it as a city, as an irrigation pipe. So I don't have an answer for you, that's something our public works.
Thank you.
Darrell Haynes?
Mayor and council members, I also would like to address this topic. I have the farm that's just to the southwest, around Waste Management, where the corn maze is, and as has been mentioned here, our tail water occasionally will come into this pipe, and we haven't had the perfect storm yet where they are irrigating and our tail water comes in, but when it does, it's going to come up out of the road. Now, Justin Stoker called me yesterday, seeking some information about that line. I've lived here all my life, and so I remember when there wasn't any development there, and it was just an open ditch that ran along the road. Then about nineteen-seventy, development started to happen, Country Square subdivision came in, and at that time, the ditch was put into a pipe, and the road widened there with curb and gutter, and then I presume it was dedicated to the city. Now, the reason there is no recorded description of that is because that ditch is about a hundred years old, and it's just by a prescriptive easement. And as also has been mentioned here, the material is corrugated metal, and at forty years, it has pretty much run its useful life. It will get to the point where it'll tear apart almost like tissue paper, as the mayor said. So I think it's not really clear-cut who has ownership of it, but I do understand that at some point, the, where the, the pipe is now was changed, and it was put out into the street. So I don't know if the city then bears some responsibility for it when its course was changed, but I, I would agree with what has been said, that something needs to be done soon before it gets worse and, and it's going to cost more to fix. Thank you.
Thanks. Alexandra Iframo?
Mayor and council, let's pause a moment. Ladies and gentlemen, may we pause for a moment to reflect upon our common goals before we begin the business of this meeting? We are privileged to gather here together in a system that gives us freedom to participate in our own governance, whether from within or through the strength provided by our personal faiths. We seek wisdom, understanding, fairness, and resolve in the fulfillment of our duties and in the pursuance of our goals. May our differences be respected, and our common aspiration of promoting the public good be our guide in carrying out the tasks we are about to undertake. Thank you. I'm still waiting, one of the council members behaved abominably on April twenty-ninth. I would still, I'm waiting, I feel that council person should apologize to the West Jordan City Council and the citizens of West Jordan. And I want to talk about evil and good. I still think it's abominable when two people, I've already asked, who work for the city of West Jordan, when you, when I ask, I'll pay for the lie detector test, but when you say you refuse to take one, you know, that, any dummy knows, if you refuse to take one, something is not truthful, and I'm trying to pursue truth and justice. Now, again, one of our people that work for the city of West Jordan, when you say that an unarmed black man deserved to be shot, that is evil. We are all born as little babies, love either comes into our life or evil comes into our lives. We know what has happened in South Carolina, but talk about evil. I used to belong to the business that's located, as you come into the building here on the right side. I must have called plenty different times, and nobody called me back. I was trying to get my code number. All the computers are down, we can't do this, we can't do that. So item six, G, I say that a couple, maybe, I don't know how many years ago, the rent for that business down here was one thousand dollars a month, and the previous mayor said it was going to be reduced to a hundred dollars a month. I'm saying, let's bring it back up to a thousand dollars a month. Hey, everybody, that's over ten thousand dollars that we're just letting fly in the air. So I'm asking the council to please bring that rent back up to a thousand dollars a month, as it should be. That going down to one hundred was politics. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else from a public question to address? Please come over. Please state your name and address, Jim.
I can't remember. Jim Bird, my address, Mayor, you want that? Fifty-one eleven West Woodworth Road, West Jordan, five-six, Brown here, Brown, anyway. I had a couple of questions, if I might, on, on a consent item. Six M, as I'm reading this, and, and it's, it's not very clear to me, authorizing the mayor to execute a written agreement with Snow and Christiansen to provide services regarding pending litigation. This doesn't have a dollar amount, Mayor, is, is there any way that you can, you can disclose to us a dollar amount and what this pending litigation is pertaining to?
It's a legal issue, I don't think I can make comment on that.
Should it be on the consent calendar?
Yes. We already have a contract, existing contract with them. They've provided legal services for us before, we're just extending that.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Want to be come forward, please?
Mayor, council, Bradley Barker, thirty-nine forty-one West, eighty-two fifty South. I live in the Huntington Estates area off of Fortieth West. Just like to cover a couple of things that I don't think got covered in the timeline. I've owned property there for over forty years, and I owned it when it was just a ditch. The residents initially worked with the city and The residents initially worked with the city and piped along our development in Fortieth before it was ever developed. There were problems over by Waste Management where it was just a ditch and we worked with the city and made sure that that quit flooding and, and put in pipes that took care of that. Now, that ditch, where it came from there, down the road, was moved, realigned, it had to be a developer in this, with the city's cooperation over forty years ago. I think the city needs to take ownership and I think that that probably could be proven that somebody's liable besides us in a court of law, which I don't think we all need to go there, but that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Garth Hardy, thirty-nine seventy-three West, eighty-three fifty South, I'm another water guy, the old short fat bald one. On the timeline of when that ditch failed, since I've lived there for over twenty years, is it failed after the road construction. But during the road construction, they had to move the meter from my house, this is just information about the whole project, to my front yard because it was out on the street. I was told that that would be fixed. They put it in, tore my yard up, it was never put back to the way it was. I'm not a complainer, I believe that we are responsible for a lot of things of ourselves. The time that did, that, that roadwork was open, they tore a tree down, knocked it down on the brin, on the sidewalk and debris, I got a ticket to clean that up. I asked for the inspector to talk to me when he came. He didn't. Came, signed off on it, I called the girls, the, the women, and said he was too busy to talk to me. Then the ditch doesn't work. And I'm going, at what point are my part of the problem or part of the solution? And I'd like to be part of the solution and not part of this problem. But the ditch failed when the city did the roadwork. I appreciate all the things that you guys do, you don't have easy jobs, I understand that. But I'm willing to be part of the solution and not part of the problem. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dirk Burton, forty-four ninety-two Black Elk Way, West Jordan, Utah. Two weeks ago, there was some conversation here about the city hired some people to do some repairs on the sidewalks. And it so happens that there was some things on Facebook about that too. And there were some council people that stood up, stood, came up and took care of the situations. And I appreciate them stepping forward and getting that taken care of. But there's more out there, there's a whole lot more out there. And I guess the question is, is the answer the city going out there and, and hiring people to do it, or maybe the city hiring contractors go out and do it? My thought is, if you hire a contractor to do it, that contractor is going to do it on a piecework basis and he's going to have a desire to get that work done right so he gets paid and do it quickly so he gets paid more often. No offense against city employees, but anyone who gets paid hourly, you know, he gets paid the same at the end of the day whether he does two repairs or twenty repairs, it, it's not going to make a difference to him. But a contractor does two repairs or twenty repairs, it makes a big difference to him. So I would recommend we continue to follow up on that. Apparently the citizens want their sidewalks taken care of and we should do what the citizens want. And if you look at other cities, they're quite good at stepping forward and taking care of that. I'd like West, see West Jordan continue to do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess since we have the sidewalk thing going on, um, you can go ahead and tell your staff not to bother putting in the sidewalk at thirteen thirty-three West Barton Hollow Drive. Fortunately, we have a homeowner who's proud of his property and he put the sidewalk in for you, so. But you need to get the staff on the same page because we either have, uh, all of it's the property owner's problem, no, we come in and do the labor, the property owner does, pays for the cement at city's cost. Or it needs to get figured out because it's been a while since I looked up code, but it looked like it was the city's responsibility all the way. But you need to train your staff so when citizens are calling up, they're not getting twenty different answers to the same question, same departments. So, um, I do know that the city attorney's office put a lien against that homeowner, not the current one. I sure hope the city will now waive those fees, um, because I'm sure the owner that caused the problem has passed those fees on to the new homeowner, so. And I'm not sure on that one. So, everybody needs to get on the same page and train the staff, the city code, what's what. If the property owner did the damage, like in front of our house with three cottonwood trees, do they pay for it? Is it the city's? Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else from the public wishing to address the council this time? Seeing none, we'll close the citizens' comments and move to the consent calendar. And I've been asked to pull item H from the calendar for discussion and also pulling item G from the consent calendar. Can I also pull F and, um, make sure, and M? F and M? So we've got F, G, H, and M.
I have a question on item I, I guess we could pull it and I'll ask it, but I didn't get a chance to ask it beforehand.
Okay. Aye. Councilmember Nichols.
A motion, Mayor. I move as we approve a consent item, all consent items except F, G, H, I, and M.
Second, a motion by councilmember Nichols and a second by councilmember Southworth, discussion of the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Rice.
Aye.
Councilmember Southworth.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Councilmember Hampton.
Yes.
Councilmember Haga.
Yes.
Councilmember Ponhey.
Aye.
Go pass this seven paper.
We will move to the public hearing items. Item seven A, received public input and considered for approval, resolution fifteen dash one-two-six, amending the fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budgets for the general fund, capital support fund, the storm drain fund. Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Most of this is, uh, some housekeeping items. When we did the budget in two thousand fourteen, we set aside five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to handle some compensation issues throughout the year, not knowing where they'd go. Some of this is moving that money to where it needs to be to, to cover some budget deficiencies. We also, uh, put aside some money for fleet replacement, uh, that was also put in the pool, not knowing exactly where that would go, that this money would move it as well to other places. And then, as happens every year, the, uh, the police get a, a few grants that they don't know how much they're going to be. So we add those grants as we go along and then add the expense lines to cover it. So those are most of the general fund changes. The, the two other, uh, things that we want to talk about along with this is, is of course, number one, we've talked, uh, for several weeks about forgiving the, uh, the debt, the two million dollar debt for, from the general, that the general fund loaned to the stormwater. This would of course drop our fund balance by, uh, two million dollars and make sure we were sufficiently below that, uh, twenty-five percent ceiling. However, we as a staff could not be assured that that would happen today. So we added to this, uh, the opportunity to possibly transfer in lieu of doing that, a, up to two million dollars from the general fund to the capital support fund. We had many projects that came up over the years, some property acquisitions, things like that, that came up during, uh, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, that we had to amend the budget and try to figure out where that money was coming from. If we were to transfer any of this money, uh, at this point, we would use it for some of those projects and we do have a couple of projects on the horizon, uh, that, uh, could use that money to be able to, to pay for that. So we leave that as an option to you. We would, uh, if passed, uh, the two million dollar transfer, we would not transfer the money without coming back to you and informing you as a council how much we were, were transferring it and how we were going to do it. But that was just an option if you were not in favor of, uh, forgiving the stormwater debt at this point. If you forgive the stormwater debt, there would probably be no need to transfer the, the capital support money. We are anticipating there's not going to possibly be a need, but you never know what happens when the auditors get here and decide that something needs to be accrued in a new year, so. We, we just don't know what's going to happen with that, so. Any questions in regards to this budget amendment?
Questions from council? Councilmember Southworth?
I guess not so much a question, but a comment, I, I can't tell if you're asking for comment on whether you want, whether that should happen or not, or I'm just, couldn't tell.
Well, I, I know we've talked about the forgiveness of stormwater and I don't think we've ever had a, you know, a, an open discussion and consent vote. We had, we had some discussion over whether it needed to be a part of a public hearing, which is why we're bringing it to you now. That is, is definitely a question, I don't know that it's ever been, uh, we're just bringing it to you as a proposal. We don't know the feeling of the council in, in forgiving that, uh, debt to the stormwater fund. So we just would ask for that to be part of the motion if it's, it's voted on.
Then, then I think it would be appropriate then if I just commented on that real quickly and, and I, I've said this before, I just, I wholly reject that, that type of move on the basis of, I, I think it's, it's disturbing, it's this trend that we've seen over the last year and a half or, or so, where we take, actually, it's not just a year and a half, cities do this all the time, our city has done this in the past, I tried hard as a council and tried not to allow this sort of type of thing to happen. But when you move money from a capital fund, it's a shell game. If, as if we've done recently, this two million dollar transfer from the general fund, if, if we want to forgive this debt from stormwater, then there's a problem with stormwater. Either A, we're not collecting, if we're not collecting enough money, collect them all. If you're collecting too much, reduce the fee. Same thing we did with our solid waste, we took four million dollars plus and we, we transferred over somewhere else. Well, that's the exact opposite from stormwater, that means we have too much, then maybe we're collecting too much. So, I mean, we just need to get those in line, I think that's the whole point of, you know, and talking about property tax, tax and truth and taxation, it's real difficult to go through that because you really need to think long and hard about, do we need this money or not? Because it's not ours, we take it out of somebody's wallet. And on that regard, I, I just reject this notion that we play the shell game with, with taxpayers' money. If it, if we're not collecting enough in stormwater, increase the fee. If we're collecting too much in solid waste, decrease the fee. But continuing to do this, it just, I just reject that and, but I may be adding a minority there if we do that. If we can justify it through some kind of, uh, public hearing or what have you, all right, but I'd just rather not, expressing a pain, I'd rather not see us do that type of thing.
Councilmember Haga.
Thanks, Mayor. Congratulations on your half the reward, it is very impressive. I've read it, the whole thing, so, you did a good job. Now, again, you know, th- this two million dollars that we're talking about, we loaned, this is one of my first council transfers in fact last year. We loaned ourselves two million dollars in our stormwater, um, utility, is, am I right on that?
That, that's correct.
And, you know, we've all, we've been discussing stormwater, a lot of our residents had a lot of issues, so, you know, it's a focus for all of us. And my question on this, now, um, last council, we had a public hearing and we had a, uh, I guess, a gap at on the general fund, the, the payment on this loan. Is that still in effect, or?
That, that would be in effect, if you did not forgive the stormwater debt, we would have, we would add that back in as a revenue. Line item, yes.
And, and the, but the two, what you're asking first day is to move this money into capital, which are going to go to some of the issues we, we found out through our study.
Yes, that's, that's correct, it, it would be that.
Thanks, Mayor.
I just want to be clear, um, we're talking about the forgiveness of the debt for the two million.
Yes.
And then we're also talking about to make sure that we don't exceed the surplus fund balance, the ability to move another two million dollars, up to two million more?
If, if we forgave the stormwater debt, I don't think we would have to move any money.
You're just doing that for protection?
Yeah, it was, it's a protection mode because as we've seen one council member in favor, one against, I don't know how the vote's going to come out, so.
Okay. I just wanted to make, be clear on that.
Yeah, because this is the last chance and if I, I'm over and I have no, no cushion to move, I'm in, we're in trouble.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll open the public hearing for item seven A. If you're here to speak on that item, now would be the chance. Please come forward.
Mayor and council, Alexandra Efremo, thirty-seven thirty-five, Judge Circle. I am against forgiving the two million dollar loan. You know, we all have water that come down on our homes. We all face the same water coming down the streets. I do not feel that, I mean, it, I can't believe it, two million dollars, you're, you're talking like it's two pennies. It's two million dollars. I agree with the former councilperson that says that if we, we do not forgive that thing, we need to split it up amongst our hundred and ten thousand residents that live in West Jordan. We all need to share that. If we forgive it, how are our citizens going to realize, you know, we have to count our blessings? I have a million of them. But if you don't bring it forward, if you don't let the people know what's going on, I mean, two million dollars, for heaven's sakes. You want me to count two million dollars blessings each time? I agree with the councilman, that should not be forgiven. And I mean, we're still paying a debt on the, on the loan. What's going on? It's just like a, a budget, we all have budgets in our homes. We all set aside so much for rain, so much for sweeping, so much for this, so much for that. I'm against forgiving this loan. I agree, it should be calculated, it should, we need to face it. You know, this is what's happening with our city. I don't understand. I want to have the truth. I want justice. I want openness so that we all know what's going on. Not behind hidden doors. This two million dollars, the way it was just said, it's just like, oof, like a cloud. It's not a cloud. It's two million dollars. That's a lot of money. I've never made that much money, maybe some of you are millionaires up there. That's why I just forgive this person, forgive that, forgive that. Maybe someone would like to forgive my credit card balance. You know? Think about it, y'all, it's two million dollars. We need to all share, all people of West Jordan to share that. Do not, do not erase that two million dollar debt. Two million dollars. You want me to say it again? Two million dollars.
Please.
I'm Barbara Backman, you, you know that. The, the stormwater fund would have a huge balance. I remember fighting back in October to hang on to four million to go to the Trump line. And, and the hotspots in the city, that's a ten point eight million dollar project. So that four million dollars still should be there to go towards that big project. And granted, it's not been all, um, put out to contractors yet, but that's why there would be a big balance, if, if I'm correct in how I'm understanding this. So, with ten point eight million dollars in mind, yeah. So, with ten point eight million dollars in mind, yeah, the trunk line has to continue. The balances need to stay in there. It has to be completed to keep growing, you guys. And hopefully, do I understand this correctly? Can, I'm asking. We, you answer?
Basically, what you're stating is accurate.
Is accurate. Okay, we're on the same page. So, hang in there. I'm fighting for the trunk line. I'm fighting for our city, okay? Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on item seven A? I will close the public hearing now, and we will vote to the council for comments or a motion. Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question for staff. Um, I don't know if this goes to Wendell or Bryce, but we, uh, had discussed stormwater rates before. I believe it, in my mind, it relates to this discussion. We were doing a study on the homes. I just wanted to check in, 'cause I know there were some, uh, Utah State University was doing a study for us to, so that we could calculate our rates, and I, in my mind, it was related to this issue.
Yes, they are, they're still working on that. They've had some issues. They were using students to do a portion of the work, and at the end of the semester, some of them took off. So, they're, they hope to get that done in the next few weeks.
Okay.
They're not done.
Alright, thank you.
Councilmember Hagan?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I addressed one of my friends out there. The two million dollars, first of all, is the taxpayer money that we did put into a different fund. In city government, you have different funds, and the stormwater, uh, wasn't my invention, but the, uh, group of coun- another council decided to have a stormwater fund. And if you look on your bill every month, you get charged every month for that. Now, we tried to keep that fund down and not increase it. However, you know, we've learned from neighbors and, and the mayor's house, and we're seeing floods. We have problems out there. And our staff did a fantastic job with, um, is that, I forget the company, on the study of our stormwater needs in our city. And we have made adjustments. We actually moved four million dollars into capitals. And what capital is, is where we put money to go out to bid, to construct things in our city. So, you know, I'm, I'm a proponent of this, but I want you to know that we're watching the transfers. Our staff's doing a great job and, and, um, really, I think, uh, staying transparent with the money. I'm a proponent of forgiving the debt because it's a debt on ourselves. It's not money we borrowed. It is the taxpayers' money. But we're only forgiving the debt, paying ourselves back. But I would rather see that, it was two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars that we were paying, that I would see, rather see go back into the storm drains and get them repaired, at least into status quo. And then our staff has put out an R, uh, RFP, I don't know if we have that return, on impact fees. So, we're gonna look at what happens as we have all these new residents, that all their water's gonna come downstream to us, some of us old time residents. Where we're gonna put that water. So, you know, we're watching this, and I'm a proponent of this, forgive, forgiving the two million dollars. Just know that we know where it's going, and it's gonna go to a good, uh, productive construction of our stormwater system. Thanks, Mayor.
Just to be clear, my house wasn't flooded because of a inadequate storm drain system. It was from too much rainwater and too short of time for rain gutters. Uh, but there are two members of the council that's homes have been flooded for insufficiency of storm drain, just to be clear on that. Other comments or a motion would be in order? Councilmember Hagan?
I'm a pre-approval resolution, re- resolution fifteen, one twenty-second, one twenty-six, amending the budget for the effective funds for fiscal year two fourteen fifteen.
I will second that motion. We have a motion by a councilmember Hagan and a second by Mayor Rawl. Discussion of the motion.
And just for clarification, this does anticipate what we just discussed as far as the transfers?
That's part of it.
We're not certain yet.
I just wanna point out to council, the resolution does not include the forgiveness of the stormwater debt at this point. So, yeah, you wanna make sure that with the resolution, you're also saying the stormwater debt, because in the, in the, uh, you know, meat of the resolution, it does not talk about that.
So, so far, I'm supportive then.
I would probably second.
And I amend the motion to include the forgiveness of the two million dollars with that motion.
I'll second that. Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm gonna speak against the motion for one reason, and that is, we're talking about forgiving the issue. My, my issue of dissent is specifically over the transfer of those funds, and this is why. Last year, this council had a chance to fix that problem by changing rates, and we chose not to. Um, and now we're waiting on a study, and those rates will fix it. So, stormwater is funded appropriately. It has needed that money. It, it needs a permanent fix. And, um, just transferring money here and there from fund to fund, which this would be the second time we've done it, is not a fix. It's a bandaid. The fix is fixing the rate. So, you know, that's my, my dis-.
Councilmember Pontyhaigh?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, although I agree with councilmember Nichols, I'm actually gonna be speaking in favor of the motion. Um, back in January, we discussed this issue, uh, specifically with the rate, with regards to rates. We asked staff that that could be brought back as, as soon as possible. Um, they, based on the information we shared, it was a little more detailed than something that could be brought back within two weeks or four weeks. So, that's something that's actively being pursued. And although I wish we could have done this in conjunction with the, uh, correction to the rates at the same time, I think this is still a significant step forward. Um, so I will speak in support of this. However, I would ask staff to proceed with all haste, and if there's something that can be done without necessarily having to wait for the USU portion to come back, um, that would, that would be appreciated by, by myself. Uh, I know there's a couple other models that other cities have used to determine those calculations that were a little more simple. Uh, what was undertaken with USU was, i- it sounded like to observe every property, and that's quite the undertaking. But, um, I would speak in support of this, uh, knowing that, uh, proposals for corrective rates will be coming soon, and I would ask that that be as soon as possible. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm gonna speak in favor of the motion. If this motion fails, we will have to find another area to move money so that the surplus fund balance isn't exceeded. And, uh, I believe that the study will show that it's not a rate issue, because I believe the rates are perfectly in line where they should be. It's a impact fee issue, which that will remain to be seen in the future when the study does come out. So, I'm speaking in favor of the motion.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Pontyhaigh?
Aye.
Councilmember Southwood?
No.
Councilmember Nichols?
No.
Mayor Rawl?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Vote. Pass this by two and eight.
Public hearing, item seven B. Receive public input and consider for approval ordinance fifteen dash fifteen, amending the two thousand nine West Jordan Municipal Code, section thirteen dash eight dash twenty-three and thirteen dash two dash three regarding the cap and grade requirements, creating exemptions for certain types of multifamily residential developments. Citywide applicability, city of West Jordan, table eight, oh, right.
Just a little, a little quick, I jumped in, do you have anything to say?
For every council.
I'll.
Presentation.
Sorry about that. I'll take it. Um, again, this, this proposal's amendment to section thirteen eight twenty-three, um, as the mayor had, had mentioned, uh, which is the annual cap on multifamily development applications. We also refer to that as the cap and grade. Uh, we recognize that this has come before the, the, uh, city council a, a couple of times before, so I'll keep my comments brief. Um, as you'll recall, this ordinance was adopted as a, as a, uh, a way to bring the ratio of multifamily and, uh, single family goings back into line with the goals and policies of the, the general plan. As a... There we go. As a quick refresher, back in October of two thousand and fourteen, the city council had adopted, um, the cap and grade codes, and they're listed in that, that cap and grade ordinance were, uh, a list of exceptions to that. Uh, these were the, the exceptions that were listed at that time. Um, in November, which is about a month later, uh, this was brought back for the, the city council, and the council opted to eliminate all, um, of the provisions except for the multifamily housing in the transit station overlay districts. Um, that was adopted on November fifth. Um, back in January, the city council placed a moratorium on new, uh, on multifamily development, just to allow staff some time to reexamine the code, to bring more in line with the, the, uh, the requirements of the, the general plan, and then just to also encourage better types of multifamily housing options. Uh, so we took a look at, another look at the code, and then we found that there are a couple of areas, uh, you may wanna look at, uh, that apply to that exemption sections, um, that you may wanna consider revising. As we note in the staff report, general plan supports multifamily near the transit stations, and the, the items listed, that are listed up on the screens, or on the screen, um, is what, uh, what staff is, is recommending just based on, uh, the information that, that we, uh, got from looking at the code again. So, we really think that the, that the exemptions ought to apply for, again, the areas that are in the transit station overlays. The general plan supports that. Um, the next, uh, items, uh, B, C, and D relate to, um, uh, the, uh, the housing code. Um, they're also supported by the general plan. Uh, B says senior housing for age fifty-five and older, C, multifamily housing for disabled persons, D is the low and moderate income housing owned by a nonprofit or a local housing authority. We also note that, uh, in, in your staff report, the general plan also supports a variety of housing, and that includes owner occupied housing. Some of you, uh, went on a field trip with us, um, to look at some examples of those owner occupied, those, uh, owner occupied residents. Um, and just in looking at, we think that, uh, owner occupancy kind of adds a different dimension. It's a little bit different than, um, than for rent housing, because it kind of adds a level of stability, uh, to those neighborhoods, pride of ownership. And, um, we just don't see that as being that, as prevalent in the, the for rent multifamily developments. We think as, as long as the townhomes are, are, are priced right, um, they're designed to be owner occupied, and there are sufficient safeguards that are in place to ensure that the development, the densities are appropriate, um, and that the units will remain occup- owner occupied. Really don't see any, uh, major concerns with allowing for, um, for multifamily, provided that they're owner occupied. Uh, item E up here on the screen says residential developments with a density at or lower than eight point, um, eight dwellings per acre. There are townhomes, cluster patio homes, or twin homes, all with a minimum home size of fifteen hundred square feet, uh, preferably on the main floor with an attached two-car garage, consisting of at least four hundred fifty square feet of parking area, and where all housing units shall be designed and priced to be occupied by owners, and that the restrictions recorded as part of the city approved CCNRs. Uh, the planning commission did take a look at this. Uh, some of those, those items reflect some changes that were made by the planning commission, for example, the density, the square footage on the, and the square footage on the, the garage and the parking area. The o- the other section that we're looking at, modifying is just add, simply add a, a, uh, definition for cluster patio homes, and that's in section thirteen dash two dash three. We know that there have been, some members of the development community are also very interested in this, and there are several of them here this, this evening to speak on this, this issue.
Questions, Mayor? Ray? Councilmember Southwood?
Ray, thank you for the presentation. I have a question on the previous slide. You mentioned.
On the previous slide?
Yeah, on E, you mentioned this, this residential development near the bottom there. It talks about housing using, units shall be designed and priced to be occupied by owners, and this restriction is recorded. Now, we've had this discussion previously, and, and that's always been, the conclusion is that really, there's just no way. How are we gonna do that now? What's changed that makes us feel comfortable presenting this and expect that we could, we could follow through with that?
Uh, I think it was, it's always an option to simply remove it. Um, you know, if it's something that's not enforceable, um, it's, it might be an item the planning commission could just take a look at and consider. Uh, but if, uh, there's no threshold number, I think that's what you're getting at on the, the price.
Well, not, not the price. I mean, how, how do you do that? How do you restrict that through the recording of the, that be, um, owner occupied? I- is that a possibility?
Um... You generally don't see that in CCNRs. So, I, my recommendation would just be to remove it. That, just that's, that, uh, price to be occupied by owners.
I'm not saying that, uh, whether that's a good thing or not, I don't know. I just don't know. We've just been, past discussions have been, okay, well, go ahead and try, but you can't. So, that's why I bring it up. How, what, if anything's changed, it sounds like nothing has changed, so it's probably not something you should have there, because you can't enforce it. You can suggest it.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Heth?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a question on the same thing, Ray. Um, because the city can't enforce CCNRs. They're, they have a homeowners association that has to enforce those. And so, we cannot, I mean, they can buy these and rent them out, because we cannot enforce the CCNRs, even though we've approved them. Isn't that correct?
Through the CCNRs, that's correct. Um, I don't know if there's an option through the development agreement, um, as part of that, that would limit, that would limit it to homeowners.
Could it be something that's put on the plat, that it has to be occupied by owners?
I think so.
Because I would be more comfortable with that, uh, because we cannot, um, enforce CCNRs as a city. So, I would be more uncomfortable that it be recorded on the plat, that it has to be owner occupied. And most of these, aren't they state required, and that's why we're changing this?
For items A through D, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hagan?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, Larry, I, I just on B.
Okay.
Did I get you wrong? Sorry. Forgive me. I'll, I'll get it. I'm still learning everybody's name. So, on the se- senior housing, if I qualify in this group, um, um, is it, you know, I'm over and, and I just wanna make sure that we're talking about what type of housing with fifty-five and older. You know, we were, went on that trip, and I was very impressed with a lot of the product we saw, uh, not only in other cities, but being built in our city. Uh, those are good, um, educations, at least for me, so I thank you for that. Um, but I'm witnessing a big five-story building out there in South Jordan right off one hundred and fourth, and it says senior. Is that, are we approving something like that? What are you saying there?
There are different.
I have a big question.
There are different types of senior housing, and I think, uh, one of those is, that we'll be looking at is, um, uh, senior housing that also has other kinds of, uh, maybe commercial uses down on the bottom of that. That would require a text amendment to be able to get that. Uh, senior living, uh, senior housing is just, uh, this, this is pretty generic, but there, uh, I think there is one. I can't remember the name, what they were using. It's a congregate care facility, which is a little different than how we define our, um, assisted living facilities and those kinds of things. So, if you'd like to be more specific, we'd be happy to take another look at that and just say, okay, well, this is the type of senior housing that, uh, that would be appropriate under these exemptions.
floor, because of the tour that we took, those, that product that we saw in that tour, certainly the good product that we saw had a minimum of 1,500 square foot on the main floor. I would like to see the verbiage be 1,500 square feet shall be on the main floor. That's my comments. Wait and see what the motion, oh, wait and see what the public hearing brings. Okay, thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
We'll now open the public hearing for item 7B. Anyone wishing to speak on this item now would be the opportunity. Please.
Ellen Standre, Ephraim O., 3735 Jud Circle. You know, I don't understand all, I mean, I'm, I'm a layperson, so I don't understand all the detail, but what I'm afraid of about exemptions, are we going to, in the future, sometime, again, gonna, I mean, we're talking about eight units per acre, but we didn't do that at Gardner Village. It's 21.9 per acre, so are we going to run into that again in the future, or is this going to exempt us for any future developments? We're talking again about an exemption, exemption, exemption. Are we going to turn around and say, sure, the next developer can go ahead and build 25 units per acre? What's going to prevent us from locking in no more high densities? I mean, multi, multifamily is, I mean, the definition of multifamily is similar to what we did at Gardner Village. 21 point, I mean, we're, that's a disaster in the future coming up, but I just want to make sure that the city doesn't, again, in the future, come up and, and switch sides again, because I remember the, I said this before, the planning commission, we were not going to do high density. Now we're talking about eight units per acre. I live on a third of an acre. It's just me. Here we're talking about eight per acre. That's still a lot. So the exemption, I think we should still focus again, not any more high density. I mean, we said that, does our word not mean anything? Do we say one thing, and then down the line, we do something else? It's just, I, I'm just so afraid, even, even eight, eight units per acre, that's still a lot to me. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on item 7B?
Jaylen Thomas, 1348 West Barton Hollow Drive. This is a clarifying question. So, I'm a developer, I come in, I decide I want to put 1,000 units over by that charter school on 9,000. I'm going to be told no, correct? But if I wander over to Gardner Village, and I'm in a TSOD, and decide to put 2,000 units in, that's okay? I'm, I just want to know where that line goes. So, do we have West Jordan 1 and West Jordan 2? That percentage needs to cover the whole entire city. Otherwise, there's no point in putting that percentage in your city code, because it doesn't mean anything. Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Please come forward.
My name's Curtis Slade, 9259 North Emble Lake Cove. I work for Home Tones, and we're a builder developer. We've been working on a concept plan for the past two and two and a half years or so, been working on that with your staff, and working with secondary access through UDOT, getting Bryce was very instrumental in helping that take place. Also had an opportunity to go through some of our product through the tour, and I appreciate you guys taking the time to do that. Over the past two and a half years, we've been able to work with staff, and trying to work with the general plan, and trying to take in consideration the west side planning area, also taking consideration the general plan, and making sure that we're trying to abide by the current plan that's in place. What we have at this point is, we have over 138 acres, if I'm not mistaken, and we've tried to lay this development out in such a way that there's different densities, different product types, different price segmentations as well, and trying to bring in a development and creating not just necessarily multifamily, 25 units to the acre, but bringing in a different type of product type, and as well as price segmentation, helps buyers out there be able to purchase homes. Land prices, sticks and bricks, those different things that you have to take in consideration is what's precluding some of the first-time home buyers from buying a townhome that, say, starts at $240,000, thereabouts, in, say, for example, Daybreak. So, one thing to take in consideration when you do bring in densities lower than eight units per acre, you're getting to a point in time when you're going to restrict some of those first-time home buyers, as well as not getting rooftops in to justify some of those commercial, commercial areas that want to come in and actually have some commercial development in this particular area off of Highway 111. That's something, I've had an opportunity to talk to many commercial brokers, and asking if we're interested in selling the commercial piece that we have that's designated as commercial, but until you have additional rooftops there to justify that, you're not going to have additional commercial growth there. So if a development is done right, and you have the right product there, and you have certain trail systems set in place and different value there, and you're going to create that destination as something that stands tall, something that's going to reflect West Jordan City is planning out well, and you're taking consideration all the different types of buyers that are out there. Let's be honest, when land is selling at 300,000 an acre, you go in and develop it, it's very hard to bring in a single-family home under $250,000. It just doesn't happen. So that's one thing to take in consideration, and just wanted to make that comment today. So, thank you.
Anyone else? I will close the public hearing of item 7B. Return to the council for discussion and/or a motion. Councilmember Southwood?
Thank you, Mayor. It's been no secret that I've had my doubts about this cap and grade, right? The concept, we have a general plan that says we have a target that we want to hit. We've changed that, and we said we want 77% single-family, 23% multifamily, because that's the reality of what exists in the city today, and I don't think that's a bad thing. That's a, a good goal that our community wants, and I support, and, and I want to get there, and I want to maintain that, actually, but, but I think what we're doing here is we have this intention of reducing multifamily, or at least maintaining it where it is, and I don't think we're going to accomplish that in reducing high density. All we're really going to do is we're going to funnel development towards the exemptions. And so you could look at the exemptions and say, oh, am I comfortable with those exemptions or not? I don't know, maybe I am, so, okay, I can go with this. But it really ties your hands. I don't think we, in any way are we going to reduce the number of low, or high-density housing that's going to come. The unintended consequence is, we will have it, but it will look like this. And we'll have instances where it might make sense, where in the past it's made sense that we have an infill project or something like that, somebody brings us a great idea, and we've had those, even this council here, you naturally has to approve those. And we tie our hands and say, sorry, we can't do that, but we can go ahead and put a multifamily and TOD or senior housing, or low-income or moderate-income or whatever, wherever. I don't know that's what we want to do. I know it's not what I, I don't want to do that. And so, I'm going to go back to my original position. Cap and grade, we have good intentions, and we gave it a good shot, but I think we missed the target. And to continue to go down this road, and to implement this, it's going to have some long-term negative ramifications as we build out our, our city. And so, I'm not in support of these amendments, I'm in support of repealing the whole cap and grade. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Some of my concerns are similar to what Councilmember Southwood has voiced. We have the general plan that states how we'd like to see growth in the city, and what we've seen over the last few decades is our growth has not been moderated nor balanced, it's been very disproportionate, and I worry that we'll continue on the same trajectory. I, I agree to an extent that we'll probably see some, if we were to put these exemptions in there, we'd probably see some additional development with, with those different things that are allowed. I, I don't think it would be as drastic, so although I would prefer that we stick with what we have, I could support adding the exceptions for A through D. E I really struggle with, primarily because I've seen a lot of places where it starts off as owner occupied for the first few years, but by the time you get 10, 15, 20 years down the road, they're older buildings, they're, the homeowners that bought those, it's their first home, have moved on to something else, but it's something they want to keep as an income property. You look over by Brittany Townhomes, and you look over by, I forget what the one that's just to the north of that. But you see where that's become primarily renter occupied, not owner occupied. You can't really enforce anything with the CCNRs. And then on top of that, I, I think it may have been a year, year and a half ago, we had somebody come discussing an apartment, actually, no, it was Gardner Village, when they were talking about the apartment complex there. One of the benefits of having an apartment complex is you have professional management. So you have one company that does this full-time, they know how to do background checks, they know how to administer, they know how to maintain the buildings, whereas with a lot of these other properties that start off as owner occupied but later become rentals, the property owners don't necessarily know how to screen people, they don't necessarily keep up on maintenance. I think we've been potentially setting ourselves up for more concerns if we were to filter a whole lot of development to those owner occupied homes. So with that, my thought was, okay, well, we're going to do an exemption for these, we should do an exemption for apartments, but then there's no purpose for anything at all, which is why I'm going back to my preference to see no exemptions other than the TOD, because we want high density in those areas close to transit. For the most part, they're already rather self-contained, and that's where it should be within the city. I'd rather not see these other, these others, but I could compromise with A through D. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Hager?
Yeah, I unfortunately have children that own their homes, and some of them have, one lives in Daybreak, one lives in Harriman, and E is the home my children live in, Harriman, and I think it's awesome. It's a very well-built product. It does have a big main floor, it has two-car garage. The CCNRs require them to have their lawn in and everything. Now, I don't know, I'm not the expert on how that works, so I'm hoping maybe that's where staff comes in. But E, from my point of view, is a needed home still for those of us that are 55 and older, for our children. So that's all the comment. I, I'm actually proponent of this.
Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe, as Ray stated, A through D are state required.
We don't have a choice.
We don't have a choice on those, that is state law. E, as I said, if we did pass that, I would rather see it recorded on the plat that it has to be owner occupied. Thank you.
I'm all for striking E altogether, not making an exemption, like Councilmember McConaughey stated. Councilmember McConaughey?
If there's no further comments, based on the findings set forth in the staff report and the evidence and explanations received, I move that we approve ordinance 15-15, including the proposed text amendments A, B, C, and D to Title 13.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, and a second by Councilmember Hanson. Discussion took the motion. Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is relative to the ratio. I don't know if staff has that, I don't know, Ray, maybe you know that. A ratio that we passed previously back in November was a 77/23, is that correct?
Yes.
And that is, our city falls within that ratio now. So what we're saying is as we move forward, without this section E, there will be no multifamily, well, units, these higher-density homes unless they fall into that ratio. So basically, you're going to have 77%, is roughly three single-family units for every one multifamily unit as we grow. I just, I'm doing that for the public's sake, and I'm kind of thinking through that as well. I'm really not sure where I'm falling on this, it's, I'm 50/50 on either issue, but anyway, I'm just kind of talking it out loud, so thank you while I talk through that.
Councilmember Southwood?
Thank you. I, I assume and anticipate and probably have the minority opinion in this, but, but my plea is, as, I guess the end of the year will be the end of my term of not seeking reelection, I won't be on this council, so my plea to the remaining members and those people who come on, if this is to pass, please keep a very, very close eye on this. My guess and my prediction is that you will see the demands, or the desire, demand from the public, the desire from the building community to build high-density housing does not disappear because we have cap and grade. It'll still remain. Please watch. I fear that this is where you're going to funnel everything, and is this what you want? If it is, then that's okay, but if it's not, keep a close eye on that, because the guess is, is that the water, like electricity, like this housing will follow the path of least resistance, and that's what you're going to get. Thank you.
Next one?
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hager?
Yes.
Any rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Southwood?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Rice?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
No.
Go pass this back to two in favor.
Public hearing item 7C. Received public input and considered for approval, Resolution 15-127 regarding the amendment to the Highlands Master Development Plan to add Gladstone Place and Orchard Heights areas, and to update the commercial area for Maverick at the Highlands located at approximately 5701 West, 7800 South, Petersonville. David?
That's it. That's it.
Yeah, Larry, that's going to be it. This is a culmination, by the way, thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity. This is a, the last few months, there has been, a couple of ordinances come forth to amend the WSPA by including Orchard Heights and Gladstone into the project. While those were going forth, as you can see in this area, the Maverick store came into the Highlands Master Plan, or there, there, came to the planning commission for approval, site plan approval for that commercial use on that site, and so we just brought it forth at the same time that the Highlands Master Plan is being amended. And so this amendment tonight will, will include the Maverick site, the Gladstone site, that would be east of the wash, that sandwiched between the Mountview Corridor, which the council approved at the last council meeting, to be a part of the WSBA again, and that's about eight acres, and the Orchard Heights property on 6700 West and 7800 South, and that's about 40 acres. And all of these, or these three properties, if it's approved, will be part of the Highlands Master Plan, and that would increase the... That's it.
Yeah, Larry, that's gonna be it. Um, this is a culmination, and by the way, thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity. This is a, um, the last few months, there has been, uh, a couple of ordinances come forth to amend the WSPA by including, uh, Orchard Heights and Gladstone into the project. While those were going forth, as you can see in this area, the Maverick, uh, store, uh, came into the Highlands Master Plan, or there, there, uh, came to the Planning Commission for approval, site plan approval for, uh, that commercial use on that site, and so we just brought it forth at the same time that the Highlands Master Plan is being amended. And so this amendment tonight will, will include the Maverick site, the Gladstone site, that would be east of the wash, that sandwiched between the Mountview Corridor, which the council, uh, approved at the last council meeting to be a part of the WSBA again, and that's about eight acres, and the Orchard Heights, uh, property on sixty-seven hundred west and seventy-eight hundred south, and that's about forty acres. And all of these, uh, or these three properties, uh, if it's approved, will be part of the Highlands Master Plan and that would increase the acreage of the Highlands Master Plan from three-hundred-and-seventy to four-hundred-and-eighteen acres, just exactly as it, uh, is the same acreage as the WSPA. Now, the advantage of having it in the Highlands Master Plan is that there's a, a planned development, you get a cohesive, a cohesive development pattern throughout the site. It's looked at, uh, uh, you know, organically, uh, I don't know if that's a correct word, but it's looked at as part of a, a, a piece of a puzzle that really has design, uh, goals, design features, has different types of land use to support not only the single-family, the multifamily, but a commercial element. And if it's included into the Highlands Master Plan, it also will then become part of the assessment area where that those open spaces and recreation amenities will be, supported and paid for by the actual people who live in the Highlands, uh, group. So without belaboring the point, I think the council has seen this, uh, a few times over the, uh, the last few months, and, uh, staff recommends approval of this. I, I believe that this master plan, or these amendments, this master plan can really kinda fill in some pieces that were, that have been missing along, uh, the point into the Highlands Master Plan. And so, staff recommends approval, the Planning Commission did, does recommend approval, uh, by unanimous vote. And so, do you have any questions for me?
Questions for Mayor? Looks like you're good. We'll now open the public hearing portion of item seven C. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item, that would be the chance.
Councilmembers, I'm Scott Howell, representing Peterson Development, uh, maybe we should just let a good thing go, so. Uh, really, I'm here tonight, they have a engagement with their son, um, is there any questions I could answer for you?
Any questions?
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
We'll close the public hearing for item seven C, move to the council. Councilmember McConaughey.
I'm actually ready for motion. So all the further comments. Okay. Well, in that case, I move to adopt Resolution fifteen dash one-twenty-seven with the condition that the Highlands Master Development Plan shall be updated to reflect any changes or modifications created by each sub-area preliminary development plan. And an updated mass, Highlands Master Development Plan shall be submitted with each sub-area plan, uh, sub, with each sub-area plan preliminary development plan.
Ten. I have a motion by councilmember McConaughey and a second by councilmember Nichols, discussion. Next vote.
Mayor Rock.
Yes.
Councilmember Higa.
Yes.
Councilmember Rice.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth.
Um, aye.
Vote passes by in paper.
Public hearing item seven D, receive public input and consider for approval ordinance fifteen dash sixteen regarding the rezone of approximately four-point-seven-two acres from RR one-D Rural Residential One-Acre Lots to A-one Agricultural One-Acre Lots, seventy-four eighty-two south, fifty-four ninety west, for the Bowler Agricultural Rezone, Bowler Livestock LC applicant. David.
Mayor, members of the council, um, this is, uh, this property is located, let me just screen it here. It's located just on the west side of fifty-four ninety west, uh, fifty-six hundred, the newly completed fifty-six hundred west runs right through here on the state area. Uh, the applicant currently owns the five acres here and here, total of ten acres, and is currently conducting a farming operation on those two properties. Uh, the entire, the area that's around it is on rural residential. This property was on from rural, rural residential to agricultural back in two thousand and thirteen. The applicant has since purchased this four-point-seven-acre parcel just to the south and intends to expand his farming operations. Uh, he indicated to the Planning Commission that he is not, um, going to put swine on this property, uh, at least at this point, it would take a conditional use for the Planning Commission. Thanks. In order to do that. This is the future land use map, the, the zoning superimposed over it. Again, these are the two, this is the ten-acre property that's owned agricultural, and this is the subject property. Uh, the property to the west is R-one-ten. It's ten thousand square foot lots, everything around it's rural residential. Um, our recommendation, this is an ex, I guess the reason for the expansion again is to allow the, the expansion of that farming opportunities, uh, because in the rural residential zoning district, the number of animals are limited based on a point system. With agricultural district, it allows the more intensive kinds of agricultural uses, there's basically more animals. So that's the reason for the, for the rezoning request. Our recommendation is, is for approval, um, of that, we just see it as, like I said, uh, as a continuation or an extension of, of the current use of the property. So are there any questions on that?
Questions? Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor, just briefly, Ray, do we know how many animals that are on the current property?
I do not, the applicant is here and probably give you a pretty good.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Ray.
Thanks.
We'll now open the public hearing for item seven D. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item, that would be the time.
Yes, uh, Mayor and Councilman, uh, my name is Lynn Heward, I'm an attorney in, uh, office in Salt Lake, representing, uh, the owner of the property that's just to the north of this whole development. I guess, well, actually, there's one lot of five acres and then the lot north of that. Now, this owner purchased the property in, uh, two thousand and three, and at that time, there of course was no farming operation. There were a few homes, a few horses, kind of what you'd expect in a rural residential area. And, uh, the following year, the Bowlers purchased that property, uh, just to the south, uh, the, the one in between there, there was a home there, uh, there was a, there was a, 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 they moved into the home and so on and, and then started this operation, this farming operation. And, uh, at that time, of course, it was apparent that there was a big increase in the number of animals because rural residential allows many more than most people customarily have. And so, it wasn't long before the consequences of that were apparent. And then they started building things like a, uh, a slaughterhouse and slaughtered things not only from their own property, but other properties as well. Which was interesting because the residential zone specifically says that it's for single-family residents and associated uses, uh, incidental agricultural uses and, uh, foul in conjunction with the sin- single-family dwelling. So it wasn't for the purpose of agriculture, but that's what it was changed to. To me, it seemed like it was kinda, like kinda like a cancer. It wasn't the way this area is supposed to develop, it's supposed to be developing toward residential. In fact, at one time, it was all set to be residential, but the requirement of the city was you put in fifty-six hundred southwest and you can develop it. And so that wasn't done. And so now, the people next to them can't sell their property except to them, which is what happened to the Athensons who owned the property that we're talking about. They've got tentacles going throughout that area there, where they own different properties, and so they use it as a business, even though it says that it's just supposed to be in connection with a single-family. Now that it is agriculture, they've moved out and the people that run the business are there. And, uh, so the city has not treated it like a cancer, but rather as something being rather benign and therefore has approved the, uh, the licensing they didn't obtain, approved the pigs by converting it to agriculture and then going to allow pigs and so on. And, uh, I don't know what will happen, maybe, it's, it's certainly not, uh, agriculture is supposed to prevent leapfrogging, but here we have leapfrogging to allow agriculture.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please.
Mayor, I have a question while they're coming up, are we gonna give the applicant a minute to speak as well?
This is the applicant.
I know, but outside of this, or, or?
They like, yes, absolutely.
So you don't have to come up now, we'll give you time afterwards as the applicant to speak.
We'll come back.
Okay.
Just wait, 'cause I think you're up next, anyone else from the public wishing to? Come on back up, Bowlers.
Good thing that's a short walk. Shane Bowler, I reside at seven-four zero-two south, five-four nine-zero west.
Randy Bowler, representing the application as well, uh, lives sixty-six, sixty-three south, twenty-two hundred west in West Jordan. Lived there for forty-two years. As staff has indicated, uh, this property to the south of our farm became available and, uh, we were able to acquire it. Uh, might mention that, uh, the property was available for some time, so anyone on the street or anyone else could have purchased it. Uh, we were fortunate to be able to do so. Uh, also might mention that we paid a development value for it, not farm value. So I don't think that what we're doing in the area is, uh, decreasing values of the property, just wanted to mention that. It's our desire to continue to operate the farm there uh, in harmony with city standards and licensing and so forth. Like to just mention, I think this is the main reason for the rezone application and request from the RR to the A-one, quoting from the city zoning code, uh, chapter five, article A in the agricultural zones, section, uh, thirteen dash A dash one. "The purpose of agricultural zones is to provide areas where the growing of crops and the raising of livestock can be encouraged and supported within the city. The agricultural zones should be established in agricultural areas needing protection from encroachment of urban development until such time as residential, commercial, or industrial uses in such areas become necessary and desirable." So as I mentioned, it's our intent to continue to have an agricultural operation there. And I'm sure at some time in the future, that property would, uh, its timing would be appropriate for another use. But at this point in time, that's the desired use for us, for our established farm operation.
I don't believe I have any other further comments unless you have questions concerning the farm.
Councilmember Southworth.
I have a question, I, I read an article recently that indicated that you helped me out here, maybe the last, grass-fed farmer or rancher cattle farm in the entire county, is that true? Or something to that effect?
Yeah, I'm not aware of an article that stated that. We are, we are licensed under the Utah Department of Ag and Food, and we have actually five inspectors who inspect us there at this subject property. And one of them did indicate to us, told us directly, that we were the last for sole profit farm that did animals in all of Salt Lake County, meaning that there are others who have animals in their backyards and there are others who may sell those but have day jobs. We're the last actual operating animal farm in the county.
And you, you kinda hit on what my next question was be, would be, talk about, you, you're probably regulated from the state pretty heavily on the operation that you do and the city has some sort of, say, could you elaborate on some of that?
Absolutely, so we have, uh, the city who we have licensing from, both in ag as well as a conditional use for the swine. Uh, we have inspectors that inspect us there for the meat products that we sell as well as the live animals and then of course, animal control from West Jordan City that stops by from time to time to do their inspections. We do get reports from all of those inspectors when they do their inspections. So we're, I guess if I'm being truthful, highly, more regulated than I would like to see.
Yeah, sure. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember McConaughey.
Uh, not a question, just an answer, a quick Google search turned up, uh, an article, well, article, Zions Bank speaking on business September twenty-twelve, pointing them out as the last, uh, where's the quote? A Utah man from me, this is the last farm in Salt Lake County whose sole source of income comes from the animals they raise.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this item? I will close the public hearing on seven D. We'll move to the council. Councilmember Southworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, based on the findings listed in the staff report, I move to approve the request of the rezone.
Second. A motion by councilmember Southworth and a second by councilmember McConaughey. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll be very brief, I just wanna make this statement, I'm gonna support this motion on one basis. It's very rare that we get to take zoning backwards. And I actually think it's a very, very proud moment in the city to be able to do that.
Councilmember Southworth.
Yeah, to elaborate on that, just even a little bit further, I, I, I absolutely agree with councilman Nichols and I also would say, our general fund, or fund, our general plan, Harley, encourages this and says when we can, we should protect it, it's our heritage and we should encourage it and embrace it. And, and I'm, I'm excited to see this, I think it's a unique, really a unique, we, we talked about economic development, businesses and, and diversity of those, and this is that diversity in action. Uh, really neat, I, I, um, so I'm encouraged to, to see us, uh, hopefully approve this and, and go in this direction. Thank you.
Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, when I came in for the, for your first application, um, I did visit this farm and I can tell you there was no smell. Um, there, the wind was, it was a light breeze, but you could not smell this away from the animals. And when I seen it on the agenda, I again went out there and found it in the same condition. It, there is no smell to it, it is well taken care of and, um, well kept. So I am in favor of the motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Higa.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I lived in Old West Jordan, um, you know, I still live next door to the Kurtman Farm. I think the gardeners gave up their last piece, no, I think gardeners still have some, but I think this is still something that we look for in our, uh, diverse city, so I'm a proponent of this motion. Thanks, Mayor.
I also welcome this, we need more farmers, um, I love the land use, um, so I'll be supporting this motion as well.
Next vote.
Councilmember Southworth.
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Rice.
Aye.
Councilmember Higa.
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Mayor Rock.
Yes.
The vote passes by in paper.
Last public hearing item seven E, receive public input and consider for approval the West Jordan two-thousand forty master transportation ma- master plan upgraded, citywide applicability, city of West Jordan. Wyndham.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. If you remember about a month and a half ago, two months ago, this item was presented to you in a preliminary forum. At that point, we requested, uh, your comments, I don't remember that there were that many comments at that point. Uh, we did ask for approval to go out and, and solicit comments from the public. And we held two open houses, uh, those were successful. We took the comments from that, those two open houses, and, uh, have incorporated them into an appendix which is in the master plan. And, uh, also, uh, we've taken this to the Planning Commission, they've listened to the presentation and forwarded a positive recommendation to the city council. Uh, this evening, we have a short presentation that we'd like to make to you again. Joe Perrin from, uh- Joe Perrin from Horrocks Atrans Engineering will be doing that. Bill Berenowski is also here in the audience if you have questions.
Evening, I'm Joe Perrin, Atrans Engineering, 1340 East Harbor, Salt Lake City, Utah. So, just reorient myself, okay. So tonight, we're going to give you a quick presentation, kind of a summary of what this study is. It's obviously a much larger study. I won't put you through the page by page like I make my wife read when she gets insomnia. So just to briefly go through, today, we're going to talk about what we did for the data collection, the existing condition of our network, what we're recommending for the future condition, and then how that was broken into the capital's facility plan. So we have over sixty-five data points that we collected. This came from a number of different sources. UDOT has some information, the city itself has quite a bit of information, and then we went out and actually collected the infill pieces that we needed in order to determine the existing roadway, or the existing condition of the traffic. So this slide right here identifies the existing roadway network. What you'll notice is that it identifies which are city streets and which are state routes. It also classifies it by the size of it. The size is important because obviously, that's where we get our capacity numbers and we're able to come up with, based on our modeling, where we might have some concerns. Just as brief information, we typically refer to things as level of service, and what that is, is that's a letter grade measure from A to F. It's not quite like school where your kids bring home a C and that's bad. We actually design typically for D right here, and if we can have that D condition during the peak periods, we're actually feeling pretty good about it. So when you start seeing those things and you go, wait, C, that doesn't sound as good as I was hoping. But to build something to a level of service A all the time is just prohibitively expensive, and it's not a good use of our resources. So this is the existing level of service that we have out here. And what I want to point out is that there's two different things you take a look at when we do our levels of service. It's the roadway capacity, but it's also those intersection capacities, because the problem that we run into, and I think a lot of people probably know, is we look at things, for example, Redwood Road, and we say, wait a minute, that doesn't feel like a green when I drive it, right? But the part in between the signals, once you get past one signal before you get to the queue of the other signal, it's pretty free-flowing. And what happens is those signals become our critical points there, and so that's where you'll identify those as being red, so we need to work on those intersections. And that allows us again to focus things. Just to give you an example, Bangator Highway at 78th, really terrible intersection a few years ago. Did they add lanes on Bangator? No, they fixed the intersection and now flows pretty well through there. The proposed futures, so what we did is we went through and we have modeled with our land, the land use plan, the development in the future, and we come up with what the projections are in different intervals of years. And what that allows us to do is to come up with a recommendation on how to prioritize the improvements that we need. And so this map identifies the future street network and where we are recommending some What that leads us to is what's called the Capital Facilities Plan. So as we look at, we want to look at five-year intervals all the way out to the 2040 condition, and we're able to identify what roads need what improvements. This specifically talks about, for example, here you'll see things of widening to seven lanes. Some of this isn't always street widening, it could be just capacity improvements through striping. For example, 78th and 90th are actually both wide enough that we could have a seven-lane facility just through restriping those facilities. 70th unfortunately is not one of those conditions. That would be one that would require significant improvements. Oops, sorry. And we do this again for the roadway sections, but also the intersections. And what you see is there's actually more, we get more bang for our buck when we can improve the intersections, because they typically don't cost as much as an entire length of road, and those are usually our congestion points, if you will. This map right here identifies the improvements that we are recommending. Again, these are listed in more detail in the master plan of what kind of improvements that we think might be necessary. The orange-yellow kind of represents the UDOT intersections, and the blue would represent the city street intersections. So if we are able to implement that plan, then what we end up with is this future level of service at the 2040 condition. And what you'll see is you still have some red, in particular, and again, just to describe, the green is level service C or better, so A, B, or C. D, the yellow is D, which means we're kind of getting close, and then red would be we were in the unstable flow condition. Redwood Road is one of those conditions, and 90th South is also one of those conditions. The reality is, unless those were going to be freeways or had some grades separated at the intersections, they're just going to be congested during certain times of the day. We leave Old Bingham here as, it's not on our five- or ten-year plan for improvements. The way that the modeling has done, we actually do see that this is a little bit overcapacity, but that's also because of the influence of the other, the other development outside of the city, and also just the angle of the road. It tends to be, most of, most of the valley where you have angled roads, you tend to have a little more congregation of traffic as well, because it becomes the diagonal, if you will. This is just kind of a summary of the costs for improving that, and we've split that, we've worked closely with staff, with Bill and Dave and Nate and Wendell as well, to come up with these costs of, by the type of intersection or the roadway improvement, where is it located, and therefore, who will be responsible. When you look at West Jordan costs, before you get too nervous, this includes impact fees, any general fund information, but also when you get those, that state or that MPO money from Wasatch Front, that would be kind of in that, that number as well. And then this is the actual ten-year recommended plan for addressing that first ten years. And this, from this capital facilities plan is where we can develop that impact fee and come up with that number for, okay, how are we, how are we adjusting from what our current condition is? And this is required by state law that you update this typically every few years. Master plans are usually updated every five years or so. Now, there's other elements in the transportation master plan that we should talk about. We kind of focus on roads and capacity, because that's what most people are interested in. But we do address all of these issues on how we're going to move forward with evaluating new developments, what kind of intelligent transportation systems can we be thinking would be most beneficial to West Jordan, some of our access management plans, some of the traffic calming options that we have, when we do identify that there's a speeding or a cut-through problem in neighborhoods. And then also again, by trying to identify that corridor preservation, it's nice if we are thinking of these wider roads, or where the roads need to be, that we preserve that right-of-way, or attempt to preserve that right-of-way now, because an extra-wide park strip is a lot cheaper to purchase than Taco Bells and Burger King, type of thing. With that, I think Wendell touched on that, we did have the public comment, we had two open houses where the public were able to come in and voice their opinions and ask questions. We had twenty-one residents and business owners that attended. We also had twenty-one online responses that came through. The comments ranged anywhere from development to transit to safety, and it was just kind of one of those, we were able to kind of address the different things. In fact, at one of the meetings, we had brought in the conceptual information of how Airport Road, 78th, and New Bingham was all potentially going to be reconfigured, and that actually was, as many of the comments as any, was that one specific intersection. So with that, there's our contact information, I'm available for questions, or if you'd like me to come back if there were more public questions first, then I could possibly answer some of those as well. Thank you.
Questions for council?
You have a question.
Councilmember Southwood.
Thank you. So based on the comment you got from twenty-one people in person, twenty-one surveys, what changes have there been made to this?
It was more of clarification.
From the draft?
It was more clarifications. It was, a lot of the questions were just kind of, well, what's happening at this, or this is in my neighborhood, type of thing. And those aren't typically addressed specifically, like, we don't go necessarily to an address and say, well, right here, we're thinking about putting a speed bump someday, type of thing. But, but in general, the comments that came in were clarifications that were incorporated into. In fact, all the comments are included in an appendix in the master plan as well.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hagan.
Thanks, Mayor. I've handed the public room, very, very professional, and actually, we have some major businesses come to River Baron Craft, so I only met one, but the question I have, maybe you have this slide up there, right? And that has to do with traffic count presently?
The...
I still, I still, this is a question, just for my own curiosity. It shows, let's, let's take Redwood Road and 7800 South, I'm assuming that twenty-nine five hundred is a traffic count, am I right?
Yes, that's, that's known as an average daily traffic, so that's two-way traffic at that, on that length of road.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now open the public hearing for item seven E. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item?
Jalen Thomas, 1348 West Barton Hollow Drive. I realize this was comments about thirty minutes to travel east to west, the length of the city, because back in 2006, when I was still working downtown, it would take me twenty to, I'd probably say, twenty to thirty minutes from 7200 exit to 1300 west, and probably another ten to twenty minutes to even get to my house, which is 7620 south. I, I'm guessing, if the comments, it's either, if they did your traffic study, it was during the middle of the day, because it definitely wasn't anywhere between five and six-thirty, for anybody who counted the timeout on that. And then with the plan, is this even considering all the multi-housing that the city loves? Because in 2040, I don't see that this would be very current as far as the growth of the cities, so I think that would not be too accurate. Thank you.
Anyone else? I will close the public hearing, and Councilmember Southwood.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a comment to that, about thirty minutes across our city, I don't know if people realize this, you took our west border to our east border, and you picked up the city of West Jordan, and you took that west border and lined it up with South Temple, that east border would be just about Midtown City. I don't know if people realize that, but we were pretty wide, we still, it's a big city. Anyway, with that, I move to approve the updates to the West Jordan City 2040 Master Transportation Plan.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Southwood, and a second by Councilmember Hagan. Discussion? Let's go.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Mayor Ral.
Yes.
Councilmember Southwood.
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Hagan.
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Councilmember Rice.
Aye.
Go pass the seven in paper.
Okay, we will now go to consent items, and for the council's information, we will do F, G, L, and M first. Excuse me, I, I and M, and then we will go to H after that, because I think you want to take any parts of that. So back to consent item F. Councilmember Hagan.
Yeah, I have a question for Ryan. So is our, are fees, have any ever increased, or are we just sustaining that for the next quarter year?
They're, they're pretty much sustaining. We did create one new one, which was the fire plan review, which we're getting a lot more of, and we haven't charged for that before, so we created that as a new fee. The police modified their records keeping so that they could, because of the time it takes to do that. Other than that, the parks fees, which were increased, but they went from a five-hour rental to a full-day rental, we did not double those, we, we only increased them by, you know, fifty percent.
Let's, I move to approve, yeah, consent.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hagan, and a second by Councilmember Rice. Discussion? Let's go.
Councilmember Hagan.
Yes.
Councilmember Rice.
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Southwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Mayor Ral.
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Go pass the seven in paper.
Consent item G. I pulled this item, there's been a lot of information in the newspaper lately, and something I thought for quite a while. Currently, the city taxpayers subsidize the West Jordan Chamber of Commerce forty-eight thousand dollars, and allow them the use of our building for a hundred dollars per month. And I think that it's time that we change this slightly. I still believe they should occupy space in our building, and I believe that making it very advantageous for them is a great thing, but it's my opinion that forty-eight thousand dollars subsidizing is too much. I would like to see it, have that. Councilmember Southwood.
Thank you, Mayor. I have, I'm glad you pulled this, I was going to pull this, I had a comment as well. I just have a suggested change here. If you go to the recitals in the now therefore portion, number three, talks about city participation and chamber boards, and the second, I think it's the second sentence here, says, the mayor shall sit as an ex-official member of the board. City council members are also ex-official members of the chamber, although they are not members of the board of directors, and so I think there's a little bit of a difference there. I would like to change that, so that it does not say the mayor shall sit, but it would say that a member of the council, as selected by a majority vote, shall sit as the, the ex-official member. So I would suggest that changed to the language. And, and if, if this council or a future council so desires that it be the mayor, it be the mayor pro tempore, be any member of the council, they can do that. And I won't elaborate the reasons why, but there's, there's good reason why we need to have that in there, so I would just make that suggestion, and I'm ready for, I will make a motion if there are no other comments, or if there are, I'll hold off.
Councilmember Hagan.
Thanks, Mayor. As past chairman of West Jordan Chamber and a board member, I've been out there, I understand what's going on, and I, I still believe in organization of West Jordan Chamber of Commerce. I do know from, for fact, and not to create any controversy up here, but the mayor is an ex-official member of the chamber board, and the only board member, the bylaws of the chamber, and I, again, I'm not speaking as a board member, other than I helped write your bylaw, in fact, when I was on your chair, and that is the city manager or when it is designated, is, serves on your board. So I don't think the council has authority to change anything, other than I'm a proponent of supporting the Chamber of Commerce. I, I function with you, I belong to four other chambers, they help business, and we've gone through some major changes, and I'm still hoping that we're going to just keep moving forward as new businesses come in. We were able to celebrate a major ribbon cutting out of the hospital, you know, with the cancer center, some new businesses are opening in Jordan County, and I hope the chamber's part of that still. I'd like to see more involvement as far as the council somehow, as far as in ribbon cuttings and things like that. Now, that's, you know, up to our body here, and if they want to come, but I, I want to speak in favor of this consent item, because we need a Chamber of Commerce still. Thanks, Mayor.
I would state that I would accept the change in item three, readily. Councilmember Southwood.
Thank you. I move, I'll get back to my, I think there's... A comment real fast, I didn't get, I asked a question, but I wholeheartedly and enthusiastically endorse the Chamber of Commerce and the city of West Jordan as a vital part of our business community, as our...
in the city of West Jordan as a vital part of our business community, as our volunteer community, as city government, and, 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 and all things included. We, um, are very, um, lucky to have a functioning chamber that is just for the city of West Jordan. It does a lot immense, uh, amount of good, and, and I'm grateful for the work they do, the hours they put in, and the service they provide. With that, I move to Doc Resolution number fifteen dash one-two-one, authorizing the mayors to execute the membership and service agreement for the city of West Jordan and the West Jordan Chamber of Commerce with the following amendment to the agreement. And that is, um, as previously cited, the recitals in the now therefore, in the number three, in the second sentence, to then move the word mayor and insert a member of the city council as selected by majority vote.
Second.
Point of order, Mayor, just point of clarification. What I need to know is, do we have authority to, um, alter, uh, five oh one four's three C's contract?
The contract that's before you has been negotiated with the Chamber of Commerce in the past, and they have signed the contract, uh, because it's really similar to the ones that we've had in the years before. So, we presented it to them and asked them if they would sign it in the form it is, so if we had a change, we would have to go back to them and determine if they were still willing to execute that contract.
And a- as far as an independent, they are an independent body of, uh, of the city. They're not like one of our communities, am I right?
That's correct, and so they enter into a contract with us to make the arrangement for us to, um, pay the fun- funds in exchange for the services that they provide to the city.
I, I'd like to make a substitute motion, Mayor, that we accept that the contract is presented by the Chamber of Commerce for twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen.
The substitute motion will die for lack of a second. We're back to the original motion. Comments? Councilmember Southworth?
You, you, never mind, I don't need to, ever mind.
Councilmember Haga?
I do want to speak against the motion. I think, uh, we need to probably table it, um, from my understanding of how we can get a contract that maybe meets, uh, the request of our, uh, Councilman Southworth, because I think that we've already negotiated something, you know, and I'm sure his motion will not repeat it, is asking for changes. Am I right or wrong?
But I, I appreciate the concern that it meets mine, but it absolutely does, I made the motion. It abs- I assure you that it meets mine, and hopefully everybody else's, uh, expectations, and I'm very satisfied with it, and I hope that the Chamber will accept it and sign it, and we can move forward.
Could I ask, uh, one of the privileges, maybe have the chair, kind of, and approach this, Mayor?
I don't think that's appropriate in a, in a consent item. Um, let's go.
Councilmember Connie Hay?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Haga?
No.
Mayor Roll?
No.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Go pass the five-two-two in paper.
Consent item I. Oh, Ben, you pulled this.
Please, George. Um, we've had several, uh, discussions on this item before, and just for, uh, a restatement for those who were not here present before, I never accused myself during this conversation for the fact that at my home, regularly...
Oh, wait, that's I, H. I meant the I.
I just could throw it, so you could... Should we do an I first, or?
Yeah, sorry.
But I is, I is the stormwater, so we do an H?
No, I am.
I think you have two, right?
There's, there's two pieces to the stormwater.
It's the H that you want, uh, the cubes.
Yeah.
I, I, it was L.
H and I are combined. I is the actual ordinance, H, excuse me, H is the actual ordinance. I is kind of that outline explaining why we're doing this and what some of the implications are.
So, we're, we're on L now.
Okay, very good.
Councilmember Southworth?
I'll remain here for now, thank you.
Sorry. Councilmember Southworth?
Did I pull him?
You pulled it, L. Gold-class ambulance agreement? Who pulled L then? I think you did.
No, I, I have.
Okay.
My original motion is M.
Well, I need a motion for... Which one, Mayor?
I move to approve, uh, consenting L.
I'll second that. Motion by Councilmember Southworth, and a second by Mayor Roll. Discussion? Sheen on this one?
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember Connie Hay?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Roll?
Yes.
Go pass the seven paper.
Consent item M, approved Resolution fifteen dash one-twenty-five, written agreement with the Snow Christianson and Martino. Councilmember Haga?
So, uh, a resident came and asked us about this, and, um, last council meeting, I, um, made a vote based on a dollar amount, but I feel it was too high, really, because we receive therapies from a, some legal counsel, and, um, I'm not sure why we wanted to pay a premium dollar. Um, but on this one, I just want to express my thoughts. Thanks, Mayor.
So, we need a motion. Councilmember Connie?
Move to approve Resolution fifteen dash one-twenty-five.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Connie, and a second by Councilmember Nichols. Discussion? Let's go on that one.
Councilmember Haga?
No.
Councilmember Rice?
Um. Pardon me, that was just...
Aye.
Okay, sorry. Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Connie?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Mayor Roll?
Yes.
Go pass the six-two-two in paper.
And then Councilmember Nichols?
Hey, just a point of order. Maloney, do you mind going back just to read my very first, uh, consent calendar motion, to make sure? Because I'm pretty sure I said that H and I is what we pulled.
Actually, I think that's how I had it too, let me look for it.
I, I think I had it, we pulled...
Councilmember Nichols moved to approve all consent items except, except F, G, H, I, and M.
Okay, so we still need to do H and I?
So, we still need to do H and I?
Uh-huh.
Yeah. All right. So, we're on H, I guess?
Yes.
I'm, I, that's, that's the, that's the, yeah, I'm staying for it.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I asked to have this one pulled, because I've got a little bit of concern with the language, uh, for the section that talks about, um, effective dates. Ba- basically, the overarching concern is that, um, as we've been working to bring this program forward, it's taken the better part of the year to get there, and stormwater issues were not something that only started a year ago. Um, it, I remember very vividly, uh, one gentleman who lives off, uh, seventy to south and about twenty-two hundred west, in, uh, I, I think it was September twenty-eleven, I'm gonna double check and make sure I got that right. Uh, September twenty-twelve, he had substantial flooding in his garage, in about three and a half, four feet, in his garage and in his, uh, basement. And as I'm looking at this, um, I want to make sure that we do the right thing and take care, and enable the residents to prepare for this better, but I want to make sure that we don't limit it to just those who have been the loudest in the most, in most recent memory. So, as it's written right now, it suggests that we'll only review, uh, claims from July first, twenty-fourteen, uh, through, well, going forward. And I want to change some of the verbiage, saying that, um, we'll be able to, for folks with head issues since July first, twenty-ten, to July first, twenty-fifteen, when the program starts, they're still eligible to submit information for a due and a determination. So, the language that I would, uh, the current language says, uh, all, says this. "All applications or claims for payment reimbursement and or fee waiver under this chapter must be submitted to the city clerk slash recorder within one year after the stormwater flooding event occurs, or the applicant knew or reasonably should have known the damage occurred caused by stormwater flooding, or caused by a stormwater flooding event exists. The program will commence on July first, twenty-fifteen. The initial year of the program will allow for applica- for acceptance and payment of valid claims that occur on or after July first, twenty-fourteen. Following the July first, twenty-fifteen activation date, all claims must be received within one year of the occurrence." So, I would change this just a little bit, so the first section would read, "All applications for claim, all applications or claims for payment reimbursement and or fee waiver under this chapter," then I would insert this, this sentence, "For occurrences on or after July first, twenty-fifteen," and then it goes on as normal, "must be submitted to the city clerk or within one year after, after the, uh, the event." I would add this new sits, this new statement following that. Claims for flooding events prior to July first, twenty-fifteen, but after July first, twenty-ten, must be submitted to the city clerk slash recorder within one year of the commencement date of this program. That would allow for us to look back and see historically if there's other folks that are out there. Plus, some of the folks, if they did it based on timeline, I mean, they may only have four business days to get that information in by July first, twenty-fifteen. Then, the next statement was that I would still include, "The program will commence on July first, twenty-fifteen." And I would strike this statement, "The initial year of the program will allow for acceptance and payment of claims that occur on or after July first, twenty-fourteen." I would strike that just because I don't think it's completely necessary and causes anything for, prior to be eliminated, so I would remove that statement altogether. Then I would leave the final line, "Following the July first, twenty-fifteen activation date, claims must be received within one year of the occurrence." So...
Send a motion?
With that, I would ask, well, first of all, if there's, there's questions as to the thought process behind it, or concerns with the language.
Councilmember Southworth?
Oh.
Yeah, be mine. I am really embarrassed now, just for a moment, is that I realize that's H and I.
Yes.
I need to step down. So, I'm not gonna say anything else, other than I want the public to know that my, my yard has flooded, and that's the reason for this, is there's a potential, it happens regular enough, that I could be a recipient of this down the road, so I don't want to participate in the discussion.
Councilmember Southworth?
Thank you. Um, I have a question, I can't remember, is this, the funding and how this works, is it based on, uh, the residence, when you apply, is it a lifetime, you spend your ten thousand dollars per event in a lifetime? Or is it ten thousand dollars per flood season, or what have you? So, I'm just curious, can you elaborate on?
That's actually in the next business item, or the next consent item, I.
Okay. So, what does it say that, I can't remember, I've got, that's how I open here, um, maybe Justin Stoker could, could answer that, or, or I don't know who the ex, expert is on this.
Why don't we, uh, pull that on the next item?
Here's the reason that I ask, as I, I see what you're doing, and I, I don't disagree with it, but if you go back five years, and say anything that happened in these five years, you can apply for, well, first of all, you know, this criteria, and how you're applying, before you forward, and you may exhaust your funds quite quickly, maybe that's okay. But, but are you opening the door to go back to any event that's happened, and instead of, I, I can't remember, you know, you might have two houses exhaust everything, maybe that's okay.
No, there's a, there's a cap, there's a max app. There's three different types of funds that are available, one for, um, cleanup, one for remediation, and one for, for things of that nature, and each one of those is capped at ten thousand dollars. As far as looking back, I did speak with risk management to ask if they were aware of any claims that had been submitted between twenty-ten and, uh, twenty-fourteen, and I think the answer, i- if I'm right, we only had one claim that was submitted? So, it doesn't seem like this is going to open up the, I apologize for using this phrase, but it doesn't seem like this is gonna open up the floodgates for additional claims.
It's not funny.
But, but my big thing is, even if it did, I would want to go back and revisit funding in that case, because I strongly feel that this is an area where, al- although legally, we may, we may have fulfilled our legal obligation, and maybe we have a moral duty to do what we can do, and if we do see that there are more claims and funds that we've allocated, I would like to go back and revisit that. I doubt that that would be the case.
Well, I also know that, i- if you recall, back in this timeframe that we're discussing, at twenty-ten, twenty-fifteen, we had an area off of seventy-eight hundred south and, uh, just above fifty-one hundred west, where groundwater was seeping up into homes.
Yeah.
Seeping, I mean, not seeping, visually flowing, in fact, when there were one drill hole in there, it spout out a lot of pressure. And so, that comes back in, that may open up the door for all of those, which isn't a bad thing, but...
And, and I...
But if we do that, what are the ramifications there, and is that what...
Saff actually did a really good job of that, because they made it very, very clear in item I that we'll talk about next, that it has to be in an area of historically known stormwater flooding. So, other types of flooding, if you had your rain gutters routed in properly, if you dug it, prensed to your window well and it rained really hard.
Is there a problem?
Um, those types of things would not be covered, because it's not an area known to flood with stormwater. So, they do have the records of where, where stormwater has been, what claims have come in through risk management. So, I don't think it's going to, uh, when it comes time to substantiate the claim, um, there's still plenty of room for, um, for, for, for our risk management team and the city manager to exercise judgment.
Yeah, that's fine. I appreciate that, thank you.
So, if there are no other questions, I'll make a motion and be very clear with that. So, that said, I would move to approve, uh, consent item six H with the following change to, where did it go?
Section ninety-five?
I believe so, I accidentally deleted that. Yeah, the following change to section nine eight five. It should read, all apps, do you want, yeah, should I just read the whole thing, or just give you the changes?
Just the changes, you can say after chapter.
So, after, under this chapter, insert the phrase, "For occurrences on or after July first, twenty-fifteen." After that sentence that ends, "Stormwater flooding event exists," insert in a new sentence stating, "Claims for flooding events prior to January first, twenty-fifteen, but after January first, twenty-ten, must be submitted to the city clerk slash recorder within one year of the commencement date of this program." And then the next sentence, "The program will commence on July first, twenty-fifteen." That remains, the following sentence is struck, which is, "The initial year of the program will allow for acceptance and payment of valid claims that occur on or after July first, twenty-fourteen." And that would be the motion.
I'll second. A motion by Councilmember Connie, and a second by Mayor Roll. Discussion? Let's go. Do you have a comment?
I did want to ask.
Councilmember Haga? Yeah, Councilmember Haga?
So, um, legal on this, so I, I understand what we want, we're trying to get dates and timing right. What, what, is there, uh, any objection from legal on this? This is a lea- this is our ordinance, so...
No.
Okay.
Let's go.
Let's see, where am I on here? No, we're on H. Okay, Councilmember Southworth?
Uh, oh, excuse me, I.
Councilmember Connie?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Mayor Roll?
Yes.
Go pass the six in paper.
Consent item I.
Chad had requested this, because this has the, the details, the other half of item H.
I may, I may have as well.
Okay. Yeah, I thought you...
I did, but I think I have the answer to my question. I, I was just gonna make sure it wasn't of, uh, a, an individual's own neglect, such as the example that Councilmember Connie said, should you be digging a trench, just hypothetically, someone is digging a trench in their own backyard and stopped at a window well overnight, and it happened to rain really hard and flooded his basement, um, and it was all neglect. This would cover that, and so, um, I just want to make sure, but I think that the answer is, no, it would not, so we're satisfied, um, in that regard. So, with that, I would move that we... So with that, I would move that we approve this consent.
Second. I have a motion by councilmember Southworth and a second by councilmember McConaughey. Discussion? Smoke.
Councilmember Higa?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Mayor Roll?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
Councilmember McConaughey. Thank you, mayor. If I may ask for a quick, uh, point of personal privilege, I just wanna say thank you, uh, to the council for supporting this. Uh, thank you so much to staff, this has taken, uh, in government terms, it's gone pretty quick, but it's taken quite a while to get this far, and I know there's a lot of hard work that's gone into this, a lot of, um, effort, a lot of thought, uh, just to staff, thank you so much for pushing this through. And to the residents, thank you for being patient with us. Uh, and again, to the council, uh, thank you very much. Having, having been the recipient of stormwater flooding multiple times, just for the record, I will not be seeking any reimbursement through this, but, um, having been on the receiving end of the flooding, I've got a good idea of how painful and devastating that can be, and to see, uh, the willingness of everybody to work to find a solution for this, not just in throwing some money out to help residents make fixes, but also the permanent fixes that have been discussed, uh, the work for the stormwater study, for the updates to seventy south, for the funding for the stormwater fund, and for the changes, uh, encouragement for the changes for the stormwater fee, and make sure that we have this problem permanently fixed. Uh, thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Last item on the agenda, business item eight A, discussion and possible action regarding restructuring the city's electrical group. Wendell.
Thank you, mayor and council. I've asked Justin Stoker to make this presentation.
Thank you, mayor and council. Uh, it kind of came to our attention a little bit ago, as you may be aware, back in August of two thousand and thirteen, um, the city decided to make a, a little change in the way they handled the electrical work within the city. Um, prior to that August of two thousand and thirteen, all of the electrical work that was being done, uh, for power, whatever was done by an outside contract. In August of two thousand and thirteen, the, the city decided to hire a licensed electrician to work for the city to be able to handle a lot of that work in, inside the organization, which has been a great benefit in being able to, uh, be flexible enough to handle various different types of electrical tasks, and to be able to minimize turnaround time with regards to some of those work orders. Uh, it became apparent really quickly after August of two thousand and thirteen, when this electrician started working, that the work greatly outpaced his ability to, to keep up with it. There had been a, a great number of electrical needs within the city that had just been sitting dormant, uh, waiting for that kind of attention. In May of, May eighteenth of this past year, uh, with the council's approval, we hired an apprentice electrician to help out, uh, the current city electrician with some of these electrical needs. Uh, in that hiring process, we found that there was, um, some discrepancies between the way that the cities had structured the electricians, uh, versus the way that the state has their license, um, defined. And so before you tonight, as a, as a proposal to kind of reform their, their job description in a way, to take what we have as, uh, existing as an electrician and apprentice electrician, and to bring that more in line with the, the license that they have, uh, with the state. And so we're proposing to take those two and create a, a master electrician spot, a journeyman electrician spot, and an apprentice electrician spot, and then to adjust the pay ranges appropriately for that license. Um, in looking at, at what we've got currently, our current city electrician is a master electrician, and so he would move into that master electrician role, the, the gentleman that we currently have serving as an apprentice electrician actually has a journeyman's license, but we just don't have a spot for a journeyman electrician within the city. And so he would move from that role into the new journeyman electrician spot. And then we have another gentleman that has been working full-time, uh, within the city as an apprentice electrician, he has his apprentice electrician license, and is spending over ninety percent of his time underneath this, the city electrician, but his job is classified as a street maintenance worker one, and we would propose moving him into this, uh, newly defined apprentice electrician spot. Um, in looking at the financial impact of these changes, we found that if the changes, the actual cost would be very negligible, um, we estimate it would be about seven thousand dollars in salary to reclassify these three individuals into positions that more reflect the license that they own. And, uh, so that, that's the first part of the item that we're presenting. Uh, the second item is kind of more related to, to the item we discussed, the previous council meeting on June tenth, uh, regarding the streetlight conversion. Um, in talking with the city staff along the last council meeting, uh, we had some additional questions regarding that that are tied to this item. Um, the council in previous meetings had approved the use of, uh, two, uh, bucket trucks. And so we, the city had been planning for two electrical teams to be able to work within the city, and that the way the electrical licenses work, you've got a master electrician can apprentice one individual, and a journeyman electrician can also apprentice one individual. And so with, with the way that we're structuring this, it actually, um, allowed, it, it leaves us with one and a half teams of individuals if we approve the, the reclassifications, and so we would propose bringing in a new apprentice electrician in that new really, that new classified spot, which has a lower pay grade, but that would complete the two functioning electrical teams, they have the two bucket trucks already purchased, and then we would be able to use that to help with some of the streetlight conversion. Uh, we have the capacity and staff to be able to handle a great deal of the residential streetlights, um, some of those that are only on fifteen-foot poles, we can do fairly quickly. And by having two functioning electrical teams, we would, we could be able to utilize a great deal of our own city efforts to, to help reduce any potential costs. We still recommend going out to bid for the arterials and collectors, the things that are closer to the twenty-four and the thirty-foot poles, but with the residential stuff, I think we have the capacity to be able to do that stuff in-house and save it, uh, a great deal of cost to the city. And, and with that, the cost would be, uh, would be low enough to say that I think that the, the cost savings we would have from a potential contract to, for full streetlight replacement, it would pay for itself for several years. And so we're asking for, for two different items here, and we're asking for the approval of the reclassifications to, to fall in line with the master electrician, the journeyman, and the apprentice electrician spots, and then to, uh, come back for future consideration, uh, to, to hire a second apprentice electrician under the new program to be able to help with the streetlight conversion in residential areas.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, mayor. So with the person who's currently straight, classified as street maintenance worker one, if they were to be reclassified, what would happen to that position? Would that be eliminated from the head count, or would that, would we be looking to backfill that position?
No, with, with reclassifications, all it is is that, that, that head, that's the organization just receives a new job title, and so it, it doesn't create any new positions, and it doesn't vacate any positions, it just changes his job title, the actual body in the organization just stays the same.
Councilmember Southworth.
Yes, um, it's mentioned here, you talked about the, um, the journeyman and the master electrician, and that each can train an apprentice, apprentice under the license, is that dictated by state code, or, I mean, wha- what, what tells you that that's the way it has to be, or sound like a union shop to be, but is it beyond that?
It, it's not related to the union, it's related to some laws that are established by the state's Division of Occupational Professional Licensing. Uh, they're limited to that by the State Department of Commerce.
Okay, okay.
Councilmember Higa.
Thanks, mayor. Um, let, we go back, uh, to the bucket trucks, 'cause I remember approving a bucket pro- uh, bucket truck last year, uh, last, this budget. Um, so do we have two functioning trucks now?
Yes, sir, we do, we have two functioning bucket trucks.
And, and what you're saying, we're, we need, how many people to run one of those trucks?
Uh, effectively, you'll only need one person to, to run a bucket truck, but you're gonna be running at a really greatly reduced efficiency, um, it's, it's much better to have one person operating the controls on the bucket while you have another person in the bucket. And so you run into some complications if you only have one individual out there.
And, and then, you know, again, the, the trade is, uh, trade, or so this apprentice electrician, um, that we're, uh, thinking about hiring, right? Do we, if we're training him, and he's, I can assume that it's type, you have to be with a master electrician or a journeyman, will he, will they stay with the city, or do we have to continually hire, you know, somebody coming in? In other words, if we approve another position, and then you're asking us to bump the pay raise of two of our present employees, or begin, so we're having three, and will that, that third employee be a trainee so he can become a master?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to answer your question the best of my ability, so let me know if I, I fall off track a little bit. So that the city currently has a master and a journeyman license working for the city, and then we have another individual that's an apprentice electrician that's classified as a street maintenance, and so we have three individuals that are currently working as electricians. Um, with the, by reclassifying these positions, it actually opens up a, a number of additional benefits, um, by actually calling the job title master electrician, it allows the city to create an apprenticeship program, um, and we're, we're still working on the details of those, and it kind of depends a, a little bit upon the direction we receive tonight, but it, it takes the, that connection between the master and apprentice, um, it disconnects the, the masters, 'cause, 'cause the way it is right now, the, the apprentice is tied to the master electrician's license, and so if anything goes wrong, it actually goes against the master electrician. Uh, for liability purposes, it would be better if we are not holding a single individual within the city liable for that kind of work, it's better to cover that as the city. And so we would be able to create an, an apprenticeship program by having a defined master electrician within the city, and then that would allow, um, these apprentices that we're talking about to operate under the program of the city rather than being tied to the license of another individual. I, I'm sorry, did that answer the question?
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, mayor, not so much a question, just more comment. Um, I, I don't see any issue with the reclassification, I think that's an appropriate thing to do. Um, as far as the one additional head count, I struggle with that one, uh, for a couple of reasons. Uh, number one, it's hard to see us go from zero full-time electricians to four in just under the course of two years, that, that, that's just kind of a psychological hurdle for me. Um, so I'd like to understand a little bit better the, the demands on them, especially if, uh, we've been talking a lot about streetlights, and if we're gonna be phasing a lot of those out in the direction of just to contract as much of that as possible, um, I, I'd like to understand a little bit better why the two teams. And then the third thing that's, uh, giving me a little bit of pause is other industries where I've worked, where you have to have at least teams of two, uh, for OSHA requirements or whatever, um, you get a team of two, then you get another team of two, but pretty soon somebody wants to go on vacation, or somebody calls in sick, so you have those three working together anyway, so you're usually still one and a half teams. Um, so if we wanted two fully functional teams, I would anticipate the request from staff within short order would be, well, we, we need at least one more person, so we have five, so we can ensure that we have two full-time working teams. Um, so I, I, I'm kind of leaning towards, let's do the reclassification and run with one for now, until I've got a little bit better feel for, uh, what's going on as far as work commenced, because I, I, I just struggle, I'd like to try and continue to contract as much as we can and have our internal folks sort of see them work, but I'm, I'm struggling with that one. You're, you're welcome to speak to that, but.
It, if I can answer some of those, those concerns, uh, some of the items that we have that have come up recently, um, in addition to some of the rodeo events that require a great deal of electrical work, um, we've recently run into some situations with, uh, a number of our utility situations, well, number six is probably one of our hotspots right now, uh, where we installed a variable frequency drive to kind of help with, with that well. Uh, when we went to install the variable frequency drive, we found that the electrical work at that wellhouse had been done thirty to forty years ago and didn't meet electrical code, it was effectively hardwired from a Rocky Mountain power pole straight into the motor of the well. And so Rocky Mountain Power refuses to do anything with that well until we can bring it up to code, and so we're, we're working on that, but that kind of stuff requires, um, electrical work, and by not having that well online, it's been a huge benefit to have electricians within the city that we can put right on that, to have them working on that, so we're not buying the top-tier water from Jordan Valley, but we can get that well back online as fast as possible. And, and that's an example, but we've also found that every single one of our wells and reservoirs were done about the same time under a, an antiquated electrical code, and so we anticipate this need of bringing all of, a lot of our utility infrastructure, the reservoirs and wells and pump stations, up to current city code to be able to install a master cutoff switch and control panels and that kind of stuff, just for the, the safety of the individuals. And so we have that. Uh, another point that you made about having persons that may go on vacation or become sick, we do have a seasonal employee that, um, i- is kind of sharing responsibilities, i- it falls under the streets department as a street maintenance seasonal employee, but it's, at times has filled in with, uh, the electrical group and has been helping out in that regard. Um, we can't reclassify a seasonal employee within the city, um, but, I mean, we're hoping that we can keep her with us if, if that's the will of the council.
Councilmember Southworth.
Is the fiscal impact, I will see it listed in here for, to add this additional, um, apprentice?
The, the fiscal impact that I put in there on the cover sheet for council action, there's a seven thousand dollars for the reclassification of the three existing individuals that are within the city. Um, on there, there's an, an additional four thousand dollars if the seasonal staff is hired full-time, but we, like I said, we can't reclassify a seasonal, it would have to go out, um, and be posted. Um, under the new pay range, we would anticipate, uh, that individual making about thirty-five thousand dollars a year. Um, if it is a replacement for that seasonal, it really is only an additional four thousand.
So I guess, I guess to the councilman, kind of his point, because you can't reclassify, you still have to backfill that seasonal position?
We, we would have to backfill the seasonal.
You take the individual, make them the apprentice, you still have this seasonal streets position that has to be filled, or is a part, or where's it come from?
I- it's a street seasonal position, and, uh, to be honest, we've had a difficult time filling those positions.
Uh-huh.
Um, and so at this part of the year, um, it's unclear whether we would be able to refill that position, um, but again, all of that is open up to whether or not she would apply for this new apprentice electrician.
Sure.
That would open up, and if she does, does she get the job? And then, and we're looking further down the road and whether or not we backfill that position, the, the seasonal position.
Okay, so, thank you, I, I would just make a comment then to the council too, that I, I think I'm in agreeance with, with councilmember McConaughey here, I, the, the reclassifications, no brainer. You've, you've got certifications, you're doing the work, you should be classified that way. Um, I don't know, I, I would rather see us outsource, let's get through this LED project or any outsourcing, a lot of this, I, I'd rather get a feel for what we're gonna have here before we expand these teams beyond one, two, what have you, so I, I'd be in agreement there.
So we have a motion?
I move to, um, to approve the proposed reclass- classification of the city's electrical workers.
I would second with a friendly amendment to add the phrase, and bring back a revised salary schedule for the proposed changes.
Accepted.
Uh-huh.
I have a motion by councilmember Southworth and a second by councilmember Hanson. Discussion?
Councilmember Reagan.
Just, uh, repeat the motion again for clarification, yeah?
Move to, well, I just, let's see.
Okay. Councilmember Southworth moved to approve the proposed reclassifications of the city's electrical workers and bring back revised salary schedule for the proposed changes. Motion was seconded by councilmember Hanson.
Yeah, that salary schedule, I don't think was anticipated for, um, approval, it was just, as FYI, FYI, here is the new salary schedule, correct? Yeah, that salary schedule, I don't think was anticipated for, um, approval. It was just, as FYI, FYI, here's the new salary schedule, correct? Yes, that's what it meant.
I'm all ready to that in July.
Just bring it back and show us what it looks like.
Discussion is moved.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Mayor Roll?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Higa?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Vote passes seventy.
Real quickly, I don't know if that was clear, or what I meant was the classifications move forward regardless. So if that's done, we just approve that. Well, just for FYI, bring that back so we can just see what the schedule looks like. Okay.
If I.
I would just for clarification.
Mayor and council, if I may for clarification, i- if we have the capacity internally to use the current seasonal staff while we still have her, do we have the council's permission to be able to work on some of the residential lights where we can? Or do you really want all of that to go out to bid no matter what?
I think that's administrated, though. The, the council, that's just, you handle that.
Okay. Thank you.
That concludes the council meeting. Your motion?
Move to burn, man.
Second.
I have a clarification. Are we adjourning the meeting or are we returning to a closed session and adjourning from there? Are we continuing the closed session and adjourning from there?
I can tell you then that I have requested that we go back, but the item I wanted to talk about, we talked about very first of the, the meeting. And, and in hindsight, I don't think that was, would have been appropriate for a closed session anyway, so, um, I'm going unless somebody else has something.
There were quite a lot of items that didn't get discussed, and you're the one that's been up since three AM, so. Well, you have a motion on the table. I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember Higa has a motion on the table. Wait, you can use a second?
Can you do that?
Yes, you did.
I would draw a second.
If, are you, I, I did draw, are we gonna, I'm open to whatever you need.
So do you? I withdraw? I would like to be excusing myself from the meeting regardless, but if it's imperative to move forward, I, I do want that to be missed on my account.
That's right. Was anything you could do then?
Bryce, what's the?
Uh, Mayor, I was just trying to evaluate quickly if some of these items could be things that we could just, um, communicate with the council, and you can individually just share your opinions with us to help us make sure that we're moving in the right direction. Again, I want to make very clear, these are not votes. Uh, these are just your opinions on things. We can give you our recommendations and then, um, so if that's okay, we would just use that method so that you can't go home. Can't imagine being up since three AM, only up since five, so.
That's the case, I have a motion. This is, all right?
Councilmember Southworth?
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Second. Our motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any vote?